Monday, November seventh, school board workshop to order. Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the front of the
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I have one public input card from Mrs. Cronin.
Good morning, board members, superintendent. So we've got a number of issues that we've got, but the one issue I want to talk to you about this morning is student behavior. This year, it seems to be totally out of control. We keep hearing about parental rights. I think we need to talk more about parental responsibilities. We have teacher assistants going to the emergency rooms. We have workers comp claims. You know, we just had an issue last week with a parent and students getting on a bus. I mean, this is crazy. What is it coming to? What do we got to do? But, you know, it's, we're having a hard time. We had twenty-eight teacher assistant positions open last week. And we have a number of them that are on workers comp right now. Something needs to get done. I don't know what, but we, we have to work together, whatever we need to do. Because, you know, the pay isn't the greatest, but when you come to work and you get beat up. I mean, you're crazy, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cronin. So I'm going to go ahead and call Mrs. Sabrina Dylan Banks up to start our item three point oh one. And Mrs. Harton. And Mrs. Moses.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, and members of the audience. Before our schools begin their presentation, I just wanted to call your attention to the document that I provided for you. It just gives you a brief review or overview of what it means to be a tier-one DA school, which is where our two schools currently fall. Also, it gives you just an overview of the support that is provided to both schools in their areas of focus and instructional priorities. Although you see me here today, there is a team of people that supports these schools. We visit the schools, and we also work with their staff in supporting them in their areas that they will be speaking to you about this morning. So I am going to have a seat and turn it over to our first presentation, which will be Groveland Elementary Principal, Mrs. Nicole Moses.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board Member, Superintendent, and all, everyone in their respective location. My name is Nicole Moses. I am the principal of Groveland Elementary, and I'm going to kind of just jump right on into the presentation. Our vision, our vision at Groveland Elementary is to be one community, empowering future citizens and tomorrow's leaders. And our mission is to consistently, and that's the key, is consistently foster creative, innovative leaders that produce pathways to lifelong learning and success. So as we dive in, I try to-
Excuse me just one second.
No problem.
It's not that one.
Awesome. And we are on slide three. Start all over. Oh, thanks. Nice little nifty device. All right, so we are moving to our area of focus. So to start, last year, our focus was really behavior in the lower quartile. And this is our FSA data over three years. And as you can see, that we had some improvement in the two focuses of last year, which is in our learning gains in ELA and the lowest quartile in ELA, which is where we really spent our time besides behavior. So as you can see, though, we still have some work to do. So this was like step one of us referring and looking at our data. We're going to go to the next slide. Next two slides are our ELA iReady data comparison from the beginning of year last year to the beginning of year this year, as well as we looked at our end of year. So if you notice, we have twenty percent of our level threes, our level three above this year compared to the twenty-one percent last year. And that's ELA. And then we're going to go to math. And math was a gut check, right? We had eight percent on level three or above. And then compared to last year, which was thirty-one percent, level three and above. So-
Mrs. Moses, what grade levels does this include?
This is actually K five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is actually K five. So what we did was we took a look at our end-of-year data, and that kind of drove us to our school improvement plan, which I gave you a one-pager that has all of this information. And with that, we had to take a minute because we really did focus on our intervention last year and just looking at our lower quartile, bringing it up. But we took a step back and looked at our data, and we realized that we really need to look at our core instruction. So on our road to a D, we decided to look at overall, because, yes, like I said, last year, we did ELA. This year, we looked at our overall teaching, the teacher's ability to plan, implement, and assess benchmark aligned lessons to focus on instructional delivery. So that is our focus for the year. And as you saw, the quantitative data showed that this is really where we need to hone in on our practice as teachers and as leaders. So our qualitative data, we utilized our learning walk. And what we noticed was that there was an inconsistency in task-aligned grade level circulating support for our student learning, high expectations for all, and allowing students to provide their evidence of thinking. And so that's the one-pager that you have in front of you. I don't know if it, it's not going to click, click here, but you have this document in front of you. So that took us to our measurable outcome. So our goal for this year, which is lofty, but we feel as though that we can make it if we just hone in on our instructions and our task align, which is seventy percent of our scholars, iReady data for the middle of the year, in K through five will show a fifty percent typical growth. So if you go to the pink folder, I put it in order for you. And you go to the third page. It's tabbed.
It looks like that.
It looks like that right there. Perfect.
Okay, I saw some faces. I was like, wait a minute. She's leaving them. She's leaving them.
I'm going. All right. So with that rationale, we also noticed that forty-three, we had a forty-three percent turnover. I don't think it was just all just due to our school, but I do think that some people realized they weren't a fit for teaching. And so we had a forty-three percent turnover, which leads to our three instructional priorities. And that is, one is to create a clear collaborative structure that aligns benchmarks, resources, student task assessments, and to transfer instruction. We noticed last year that our teachers were planning, but the transference of that planning was inconsistent. So we want to make sure that we are doing that, and that takes us to the second priority, which is monitoring the transference. And that's going to be through our walks as well as our focus standards checklist. And lastly, which is what is really most important, is really knowing that all teachers need a coach. So we created a tiered coaching system, which looks at our, our teachers that have BAM scores of an I, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory, as well as our new teachers, as well as just teachers that just need support in just implementing any type of strategy that we're looking at. And so that takes us to that next section, which is our coaching support. So right now, at Groveland Elementary, we have three classroom teachers that have needs improvement, two classroom teachers with unsatisfactory. And in those areas, they are receiving coaching support, and the coaching support is a two-week cycle that all of our, that our coaches are going through. And we currently have four coaches that are working with our teachers in order to assist either in instructional practice and delivery, or just overall planning or classroom management. So this coaching cycle looks like they do an observation. The coach goes in and does an observation. Then they debrief the observation with the teacher. Together, they come up and set a goal in an action plan. And then sometimes it may lead into them role-playing or just going in for another observation in order to give feedback on that action plan. And lastly, we take and look at the implementation of those action plans, and then we repeat the cycle if necessary, or we move on to something else, whichever, whichever the coach and the teacher feels is necessary. And lastly is our state visit and our next steps. So out of, I think the big glow for Groveland Elementary, especially since we were working on behavior last year, was that the behavior this year, the state made it a point to really talk about how our students are ready to learn. They are ready, they're intensive, and the behaviors are down tremendously. So now we have the recap of the things, the opportunities for growth. In those areas, those are the five, which is the intentional, being intentional about choosing higher-order thinking questions, the pacing of instruction, teacher clarity, task-aligned to grade-level benchmarks, and then modeling the expectations, as well as for learning and demonstrating tasks. Our next steps, our deliverables, was to revise a common planning tool, side-by-side coaching, and define tasks. And what you'll see, the ones in green are the ones that have been completed, and addresses which opportunities are on the left. And there is a typo in the third one. Define task alignment actually does two, three, and four. And lastly, they came out on the twenty-first, and they noticed that we probably need to create a, a science common planning tool. And so that's in yellow because we're in progress of doing those two things. Okay? And that'll be it for Groveland Elementary. Thank you.
Do you want to take a time? Do you guys have questions? Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Yeah, perfect. Okay. Mr. Mathais, you want to start, and we'll maybe wrap around?
So you stated that your, your turnover rate was forty-three percent? And then we also spoke about consistency and building. What do you think that the, the culture of your teachers and the community of your teachers is right now as far as? Usually that indicates, that's a pretty high number, right?
It is.
And I don't think it's people that just merely decide they didn't want to be teachers anymore.
No, you're right. I, I do believe that some part of that was, it wasn't, they, the, the environment right now are for teachers who, it, it is hard because of the status that we're in, and the work that we're doing is new. And we're, we're asking teachers to do a lot more planning now. And so, but overall, they're happy with the, the behaviors. They're happy with the support that they're getting from teachers as well as administration. And actually, the community has came in and done a lot of support as well. No problem.
Mr. Brandyberg?
Got a couple of comments and a question. I did like the idea of the common planning and the small groups and the role plays, and just trying to help some of our younger teachers with a forty-three percent turnover. You've got a lot of new people in that room. So just giving them some more at-bats, let's call it, more one-on-ones, and just that sake of being able to practice these things before going to a group of elementary school kids that can be brutal. So I, I think that's a great idea. The one thing I had on the, the state review slide, you mentioned behaviors were down and students were ready to learn. That, that's great. How are you doing that? Is there anything that's specific, or is it just overall cohesion now, or what's the secret?
So the secret was Panther pride time. When I came in last year, I recognized students each week. We would go around and recognize the students for our pride, which is the potential for greatness, the respect we show ourselves and others, the initiative to take on all learning opportunities, the determination to see all learning opportunities through an empathy. So last year was the first year we implemented it. This year, we went on the announcements and described what that looks like. Now the students are expecting it. So instead of waiting for terrific kid or the end of nine weeks, the students are able to get recognized each week, and when I don't show up, they make sure that, that we know that I am there. And so that really was the biggest turnaround, is being able to know that, let, let the kids know what the behavior should look like. And then we have, of course, the token economy with the Panther Bucks and different things like that. So that was the huge turnaround for us.
Good deal. Thank you.
No problem.
Mrs. Cunningham?
You said there was a huge turnaround. Do you have any percentages or data that you could share with us regarding the behavior?
No, I did not bring that part, but I can get that to you.
Yeah, I would be very interested in that. I have a question about your science. You said that one of the things that the state indicated was that perhaps there should be a common planning for science? Is that going to include all grades or just fifth?
Currently, right now, it's fifth. That was the way we were able to make it work. Our focus right now is fifth grade. But we are doing something in Wednesdays, on Wednesdays, where we're incorporating science lab for all grades.
Have you given any thought to dropping down a grade?
To fourth.
Yeah, because you know, if you wait until fifth, it's the testing year. So I think perhaps if you could give some thought to perhaps starting a little younger, that might increase your opportunities. Certainly, I think it's wonderful that you're doing that. I think that's going to be significant. But I think if you start in fourth grade, then you have them prepared so that when they do get to fifth grade, it's not the first time those teachers have seen that. Because, you know, it, it just helps. And it also helps if you move people around. You know, sometimes people don't always stay in the same grade level. You might have a need to have them do something else. You also mentioned about delivery of content not being aligned to the benchmark. Can you talk to us a little bit about what you did to correct that and how that looks now?
So the common planning tool actually helped correct it. So before, what we were noticing was that they would plan together, and some teachers was not following the plan. They kind of went off the plan, and that could have led to a number of reasons. One, maybe they weren't there for planning, or two, they just didn't feel comfortable. So what we're finding now is that in common planning, we discussed the actual benchmark and the task that they have. And with that, we're asking, what does that look like? A couple of weeks ago, it, we found a teacher, you know, really realized that she didn't know how to use the manipulative. So in common planning is now the time for them to kind of build that trust and just get out there in order to make sure that they understand what they're delivering to the students.
And I think I had one last question. Oh, on the coaching. You said it was in two-week cycles. Can you just briefly kind of tell me what happens in those two weeks?
So, well, the plan, though, that, that is what's happening in the two weeks. And the two-week cycle is so that we can make sure that, because each coach is taking about six to nine teachers. So what we're trying to do is have them see one day, and then the next week is the observation. And if we need to go back and have a conversation, then we can do another two weeks. But we didn't want to draw it out. We didn't want to draw it out. So really, the best way to explain it is that maybe you'll have, you'll see four teachers one week, and then review the next week, and then for the new, new teachers the next week, and review it that way. So that was why it's a two-week cycle, so that we can get through our staff.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you know that planning is probably the most important thing to being able to turn your school around. And I have it on good authority that you are an expertise, you are an area of expertise in the sciences. So I'm sure that you will work really hard and get that done. And I'm very appreciative, and I look forward to perhaps coming down and being able to see some of these wonderful things you have in place.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, so I had a, a couple of questions as well, and just kind of trying to process the data. One thing that stood out to me, looking at the FSA achievement levels, is that science was your highest subject area of achievement. And so, you know, piggybacking on this idea that you would start at fourth grade, I think would be a, a big advantage for you all. You know, what I also thought was interesting too, and perhaps you can, you can explain more about this piece, is this, I understand the, the big focus on the bottom quartile, the lowest quartile of students. And even though you're making gains in the lowest quartile, your overall achievement level is going down. And so, I, I, you know, I guess if, if I put myself in the shoes of a parent of a student who is not in the lowest quartile, I say, okay, are they starting to neglect my kid because they're focusing here on the lowest performers? And are we, are we looking at all kids? And so-
Right. So that was what I spoke to earlier, where I talked about last year that when I came in, that's what we focused on. And then this year, we're doing the whole group. We're looking at our, focus on our instruction, and that's why collaborative planning is so important. And in order, and to be honest with you, high expectations is what's really our big drive. That was what we did our PED on, is what it looks like. What we're finding is due to COVID, when I was having conversations with teachers, it was more like, our students can't, our students can't, our students can't. And I was like, well, why can't they? And teachers are, they are, they're, they're doing the best they can with this piece. And so that was the reason why we went into the common planning tool in order to have questions. So in our common planning tool, there are questions. There are things that they have to do prior to coming to us that they have to think about. So yes, your students may not be able to do A, B, C, and D. But what if they are able to do A, B, C, and D? What are you going to do then? So that's why all the planning is extremely important, and you're right, and that was my big aha too, looking at the data, is that our tier, our, our students that are on grade level were going down. So we had to focus on our core instruction and utilize high expectations, as well as the common planning, and making sure that, give them some time to grapple with the information and struggle, and let them go. We did find that there was a lot of scaffolding going on when they didn't need to scaffold. They're providing resources, and some of our students didn't need it. And so that's, those are the conversations that we are consistently having when we walk our classrooms, because you're right. I completely agree, because my child goes to Groveland. So I really believe that all students can do the task in front of them, as long as you just let them go. These, the children are smart. They figured out smartphones and everything else better than I can. Right. There's life in everything.
How often do you all do the common planning?
Tuesday and, so right now, it's Tuesday and Thursdays for the upper grade. Tuesday is math, Thursday is ELA, and then Wednesdays, they have an all-day planning where we do a wonderful Wednesday. And they get one day of planning where they, they're splitting their time between ELA math and science.
Okay. All right. Certainly, the other thing is, there's a great benefit of bringing everybody together. And I was, was also looking to see that teachers are also getting adequate individual time, right? Because I know that there is work that goes on that you can't necessarily accomplish in a group. All right. And, and do you have, you said the coaches are in there in the common planning?
Coaches as well as administration.
Okay. All right. Very good. Are there common assessments as well that are used?
Yes.
And who developed those?
Right now, for math, we're utilizing the math blueprints because we have a new curriculum. And then for ELA, we are tweaking those to make sure that they align to the task. So we are using wit and wisdom, but tweaking them as, as, as we see fit that what do they need? We're trying to truly pick out the meat and spit out the bone for our students and teachers. And that's what's taking the bulk of our time right now, is going through wit and wisdom and making sure that the task is completely aligned to our new standards.
And I, I, so is that, is that unique to your school, doing, doing that sort of work, or are we finding that that's happening in lots of places?
I can only talk to Groveland Elementary.
Yeah. I guess I, I guess I'm just kind of wondering if, if you get all these schools that are all trying to do the same kind of work of trying to figure out this alignment, rather than, I don't know what's occurring at the district level on that.
Yeah, I can only speak to Groveland and what our need is.
And so, so I guess when it's occurring individually at each school, I, I start to wonder if this school pick out the right things, or this, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know. And, and I know you all have a lot of work on your plate, and so I hate to have more work for you.
Well, we do have support. We have support from the school improvement, Ms. Dylan Banks and her team, and we also have support from curriculum. So they are there with us in this work, as well as our Region Three team. They're coming in and they're working with us side-by-side, so we're not doing this work by ourselves.
All right. And I, I know one new practice that has really now been elevated through the school, the student progression plan, and the idea of redoing assignments. And what does that look like in your school?
So we are using Wednesdays, as well as teachers are using some of the intervention time in order to do redos. One of our big conversations now in common planning is making sure that students understand the work right then, the standard right then, and not waiting until later, like the end of the assessment. So as we are aligning the task, we're asking them to listen and watch for the tasks that are coming up so that we can remediate right there. If, because out of the hundred and twenty, for instance, the hundred and twenty reading block, we're able to pull a small group. And if that small group needs to be remediated right then, that's when it happens. So those redos can happen during that time or during intervention. But we also have after-school tutoring that some of the teachers are utilizing for redos as well, if the parents can pick them up. But a lot of times, that's not happening. So we try to make sure the time is built in within the schedule.
And I, I'm always looking for feedback on that sort of policy that we put into place. Do you feel like that is, that you're seeing some good results from your kids with that practice in place of?
I don't know, to be honest with you. What I do know is that when, I would, because I have not looked that deep into whether or not the redos are helping or hurting as of yet. I think with the conversation, I just know that one of my teachers came back to talk to me about the difference between when they do the redo, taking an average versus the actual grade. So that's why I can't really speak to that right now, because I don't know if my teachers are taking averages or doing, replacing the grade. And that was a conversation, and I was like, I didn't, I didn't even know that they were taking averages for the grades, so I can't speak to that right now.
That, that does make me, I guess, on a separate conversation, wonder about more of the rollout of, of what this redo looks like, because I, I've, I've heard of many teachers who are taking averages or not,
Right.
you know, implementing the, the redos and so on and so forth. So I, I guess if we're going to roll this out and be, and do it with fidelity, I guess I, you know, I'm really hoping that there's going to be this, this reteaching component where the kids are now going to be able to achieve mastery. I think that's the whole idea versus just improve the grade. And so I'm interested to see at the end if this helps improve the mastery for your kids on that.
Can I, if you guys wouldn't mind, I know this is a separate conversation similarly, but I've been having some concerns about that too, just for the board to consider, and, and differently, different kinds of concerns. And so like, as we think about behavior, behavior seems to be a common theme that we're hearing. And I can tell you even my own students, I feel like there has now developed a degree of, I don't have to do it right the first time. And I think that could be a learned behavior. So the, the talk of accountability and the talk of allowing a student to achieve mastery and understanding, I, I do think there'd be, there would be some work that we need to do around that. I feel like there is some, some, there are some unintended consequences that have now become behaviors in our students as a result of allowing an opportunity to redo and not giving it your best effort the first time. So I can tell you even in my own students, I see that. So, and it's very frustrating as a parent to know, like, the conversation last week was, oh yeah, I got a sixty-seven on that, but I can just redo it. oh, yeah, I got a 67 on that, but I can just redo it. Well, wait a minute. So, at what point do we say, you're perfectly capable, and this was laziness versus you need to really have another shot because you didn't understand it? I don't, that, those lines, I think, should be discussed and maybe talked about more clearly. I have a, the behavior part, I've heard more in the last two weeks about behavior, and it has, seems to be a, a theme in this school year. Ms. Cronin spoke to it this morning. I appreciate the conversation.
It's a big challenge. And I'm really looking forward to that conversation.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think, I think it's a very complicated one.
I do too.
But there's, I think there's great merit in, a student doesn't understand something.
I do too.
Let's get you to mastery. And so, whatever that look, I don't know. But, you know, I'm just wondering how you all were leveraging what we've currently got in place. So, that, that being said, parent support at home, what, what does that look like in your school?
Now that we're having them back on campus, and I, I, we did our first Fall Festival. The goal right now is to just kind of get them on campus. Because last year, we really did not have this parent support. We've done a lot of, as far as behavior, I have a whole team working just on behaviors, like attendance. Attendance is huge at our school, and it's, it's high. And it's the same students that are coming, that are either not coming in or coming in late. So, as of right now, the parents that are going to assist and want to be a part, they want to be a part. Those that don't, they don't. And so, when I see them for accolades, or in the community, or during various presentations that we have, because there's free food, or they just want to see their child, that's the time I kind of use, hey, I need you guys to do this. I need you to be a part of my SAC. I need you to be a part of PTO. We just got our PTO back up and running. And like, I, I would say that Saturday's Fall Festival event was successful compared to, though, compared to what I've seen before. And when I say before, is, I'm talking about previous, previous activities as far as where it comes to just being a part of an organization, PTO, SAC. They weren't coming, but they are coming to these other events. And so, while I'm there, I have my staff going out and just giving them information. Hey, you, we, these are the things that we need assistance with. But to answer your question, it's getting better.
Okay.
It's getting better.
That's good. I hope that that trend continues, because certainly the job is a lot easier when you've got some parents at home. And I know that in, in your community, that's, that's a challenge for, for some folks. And, you know, the other, the other big challenge I'm thinking also too, is just Tier Two or Tier Three MTSS. Like, there, I, I bet, I mean, just based on, on your achievement data, there would be many kids who, if they were in just about any other school, they would be receiving Tier Two or Tier Three. But because you have so many below proficiency levels, you can only, you can only, you know, address so many kids at a time in Tier Two or Tier Three.
Right. And so, speaking of that, I was trying not to bring up tiers, but we, we paused first quarter doing Tier Two, Tier Two, or trying to put students in Tier Two in order to get our Tier One together. When our Tier Two and Tier Three are higher than our Tier, what we're doing, we had to really look at our core instruction. And that's what we wanted to get up and running, because we weren't able to understand whether or not these students really need assistance, or were we just not teaching and assessing at the right level? And so, that's what we paused on first quarter, is just trying to make sure our Tier One was solid in, in the delivery of instruction as well as planning. And now, we're back up and running with our Tier Two, with our remediation teachers. So, we had a lot of our teacher, the remediation teachers and TAs pushing into classroom in order to support first quarter. So, I agree with you.
Yeah. It's just the, you know, there are only so many hands, so many hands you've got. And, but, you know, that's, it's just by nature.
And time is not on our side, right?
No. It really isn't. It really isn't. So, you know, all, all these, all these initiatives being said, I, I don't know that there's any that I would disagree with or any efforts that you're, you're putting forward. But I guess I'm, I'm wondering more about the, the implementation piece, or how the, the buy-in piece on this sort of thing. Do you have teachers as part of any sort of leadership sort of groups that's, that are there to, to be the champion, to bring this back, to be like, hey, guys, this, this is good stuff? Or that they're providing input on, on this?
Our teachers provide input through their Common Planning. So, grade chair, we start with grade chairs to roll these things out. But through Common Planning, we sit, and when we first rolled out the tool, we sit and ask for their feedback to the tool. What did they think? And of course, at first, because it was a lot, it was overwhelming. But once they dived in, they saw the value of it. That's one, as well as we are doing professional development, giving them the why. So, on September, what was that, the second? Well, our first Professional Development Day, as well as our Teacher Planning Day. Those are the times that we're saying, here's where we are, here's where we're going, and this is why we're going. And that has created a lot of buy-in. Of course, you're going to always have some that push back, but for the most part, the majority of the teachers are, they're in it to win it. They really are.
They are.
They are.
And then, I think my, my final question is just about completeness of data. You know, you, you touched on a couple of challenges that you were facing in, in attendance, right? We certainly get that. So, I, I, I know that's a real thing out there, just, it's hard for them to learn if they're not in school, right? So, I guess I'm interested to see what the attendance has looked like this year compared to prior. I think Ms. Cronin spoke beautifully about the challenges that we're seeing in behavior. I, just as, you know, we're getting the, the SRD report every day, I'm like, man, these feel like they're getting longer and longer. And I don't know if it's just a feels like, or if it's completely normal, I don't know. But I guess I'd, I'd be interested in looking at the behavioral trends over time to see. You know, I don't think you're alone. I really don't. And, and I don't know how we, as a society, fix this sort of thing, but, but yeah, I think that's another challenge we're up against. And, and I know the other piece of this is still very new to us, is just the state's progress monitoring. I know we can't compare that against prior years, and I know it's based on the full grade level standards. And so, if a kid has a one or two now, wait, that's not the red flag. They haven't been taught all that information yet. But I guess I'd just be interested to see what that, what that even looks like.
Was there an ask? I wrote it down, but I wasn't sure if there was an ask.
I guess I'm just interested in looking, in seeing what that data is. I don't, I don't know. You know, I, I don't know how many kids are starting at a, at a level one or two. But once again, I, it's hard to do anything really with that, other than look at it and then compare it to the end of the year, when that comes along, right?
Or give or another update?
Yeah.
Are we asking that we come back with an update near the end of the school year, just kind of give you guys?
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that. I mean, right now, I would expect the kids to be one or two. They haven't, they haven't learned the year. They haven't, they haven't experienced the whole school year yet, so, you know. I wouldn't expect them to be three, four, and five yet, but...
We can do a follow-up.
But, yeah, I'd be interested, just to see how that trends, how all that data trends and, and what that looks like.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, the beauty about going last is that, like, three of my four questions have been discussed, and so, that's helpful. I would like to say, the, one of the first things that I wrote down was that I love that you're looking at your core instruction. I think that, I'm listening to all of the data that we look at, and how do we know that that data is reliable? And so, the more data you can have. But if your Tier One data isn't telling you what you need to know, you have to fix it. And so, we talk about planning, and Ms. Cunningham spoke to the importance of planning, and I am such a strong believer in that. But how do we give teachers the opportunity to plan for Core One, or Tier One, core instruction, and plan deliberately for Tier Two and Tier Three? So, the focus absolutely is going to help all kids in Tier One. In regards to, and this is a conversation, I think, is so important, but in regards to the district providing, I, the support that's individualized for your school, for both of your schools, I know, has been tremendous. And the, the PLC process begs itself to be school-led. And so, I don't know that if we hand a solution to a school, the buy-in isn't there. So, like, you discussed a teacher that didn't know how to use manipulatives. If they're handed a plan that involves Tier One instruction with manipulatives, and they don't know what to do, then that's not going to be transferred. And so, I have felt that way sometimes in the work that I do outside of Lake County Schools. Like, oh, my gosh, I've done this work about 70, 100 times, like, oh, my gosh. But if I hand it to you, you're not going to see the benefit of it. And so, I appreciate the instruction. I appreciate the opportunities for them to learn from one another and to try new things. The only question I had left was the transference. Are you seeing it now, like where it was at?
Slowly but surely. And it was, it, we started with our teachers that we knew were struggling with just the overall concept of teaching, especially like new teachers, right? But with, between the modeling and the conversations, slowly but surely, we are starting to see the transference. They understand the importance, they understand, and really, right now, it's pacing. It's getting them to, up to a pace that we do not have to drag things out for students. Let's just go, let's keep it, let's keep the pace moving without leaving any child behind. It's just really kind of getting an understanding of 80 to 85% of the students get it. And then, other than that, we smart, we remediate in small group, let's keep going, so...
And just the connections too. Like, I'm thinking about the transference and the gaps that we have in instruction from COVID, or from whatever the reason. But if we're delivering our Tier One instruction, those connections can be made so quickly. So, it sounds like everything's going good. My last question is, do you need any more support? Is there behavior support? Like, when you said that you were seeing such a difference, I had the same question written down. What is it that you are doing that's causing the decline in behavior? So, I appreciate the description. Is there, is there anything else that you feel like needs to take place?
I can tell you, our region and our district has really been behind us and supporting us with modeling and coming in and having conversations with teachers, questions about our curriculum. When we have questions about curriculum and the blueprints, they are there to assist. So, as of right now, no, I just need more time in a day.
Well, okay. We'll work on that.
Yeah. That's it.
Ms. Bozis, thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate your time. Mrs. Hartog, under Triangle Elementary Schools, next.
Good morning.
Did you, did you want to speak? I, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. You had, did you want to say anything?
Well, I did. I had just a couple of follow-ups.
Sorry. I was looking this way, not this way.
First of all, thank you. I have had a chance through our teacher advisory groups. Remember, we have three that are still going on, addressing a lot of these issues that she's mentioned already, and some of that address your questions that you've had. Certainly about the best practices, that one started first. We're kind of wrapping that one up, so we look forward to bringing you that information, which really focuses on every group, whether it be elementary or the secondary group, focused mainly on, as their most critical issue was, how do we better define what redos and retakes look like? They were, they're addressing, you're very concerned about, are we, are we creating a, a group of kids that just feel like, oh, I don't have to, I don't have to listen right now because I can redo it? So, they're looking at specific language about how to address those issues. And remember the policy that you adopted at the beginning of the year? Did add some teeth to that as well, that says that they will redo and retake around the essential standards. So, when she talked about kind of digging in, you asked about, are you, are you the only one doing that district-wide? With all of our leadership teams and through our PLC work, it's really focusing on those essential standards. And so, using our blueprints, being able to identify, then, that first question in our PLC work was what do kids need to know and be able to do? Looking at what our standards are asking kids to do, and really digging in deep with that work. And so, we are all doing that as a learning community. We are focusing on essential standards. Like you said, you can't just give them, these are the essential standards, now go teach them. There has to be some look at what are the, what are the standards asking kids to do? How do we utilize our blueprints and the curriculum that we have that are all aligned to be able to really dig into, like she says, the, the meat of what it is that we want kids to, to be able to know and be able to do? And so, we are, we're all doing that work. And I think we're all, have all identified that going back and really focusing with new curriculum and new standards on our core instruction is what we're all working on, as well as that intervention time, which is so critical, which it all, if we think about essential standards, what are we grading? We're grading essential standards. What are we doing? Redos and retakes? We're redoing and retaking those things that are essential to the learning and for that course, so that content. What are we intervening on? We're intervening on essential standards. And so, everything goes back to that one key component of the essential standards work. The other two groups that are meeting right now that are, and I am just in awe of our teachers and the work that, and the conversations that are happening with these teacher-focused groups. Kathy is with me and everyone, and I think she'll attest too, that our teachers are amazing. The conversations have been around very solution-driven about, we have the one about behavior and discipline that's meeting right now. We have the one that's meeting about the intervention time. And so, three groups that are being led by district teams that are, that are really digging into the, we have Sabrina, Dylan Banks sitting here, she's leading our intervention teacher-focused group. And so, just great conversations that are, that I'm excited to bring back to you, their work, and for them to come and be a part of some upcoming workshops, to be able to talk about redos and retakes and interventions and student discipline. And, you know, I just, I just want to say, I, as part of that conversation, these schools have teachers that are there. And we've, we've talked about student discipline. We talk about it a lot. And their representative said to me about two weeks ago that the culture and climate at Groveland Elementary has changed tremendously over the past year. The student, she said that students are coming, and you said it too, students are coming ready to learn. And it's, it's very different than what they were seeing at, you know, even pre-COVID into now, that some of the changes that, that you have made and your leadership team have made. So, I applaud your work and the things that are happening there. But, you know, when we look at our daily reports, we know that behaviors have escalated. But it's, it's still that small percentage of students. It's just that those behaviors are, if you look at the daily reports, out of 47,000 children, it's typically, you know, five, six, seven, eight reports a day. Often, it is the same child that you're seeing those reports on, and you're, and you're not aware of that. And so, one of the things as we, as we think about tomorrow and that referendum, one of the things that it allows us to do is to continue to add these alternative programs, which has been key in really finding students that are having significant behavioral issues, being able to put them in an alternative setting where they can get therapeutic services and intensive supports. And so, for all of these schools, they'll tell you, it boils down to maybe just a handful of students to which need some alternative placements. And without, without those funds, to be able to continue to expand those programs as we see more students needing those services, it will be a challenge for us. But that is, that is the key, is matching the needs of students with the services. And it's, that's why tomorrow is so important. And I am, again, thank you. And I hope I answered some of your questions, but, but these are ongoing conversations. And we're almost wrapping up now the elementary and the secondary best practices for grading ones. That, that one will come to you first. And the other two are still meeting. And so, we're meeting on interventions this, this week, so, Wednesday. So, teachers are committed, and they're doing a great job, and great conversation, so... That was a lot.
Thank you. No. I apologize for interrupting you. I knew it.
Not quite.
All right. Mrs. Hartog?
All right. Thank you so much. Good morning, board members, Superintendent Carnegie. Thank you for having me here. So, I would like to first just say that, you know, it's a lot of hard work, but it's good work that is going on in our schools. So, our mission and vision at our school is that we embrace diversity and empower all of our learners to believe, achieve, and succeed in our lifelong learning. Our vision for our school is that in collaboration with families and community, we will provide engaging educational opportunities and maintain high expectations for all, for all learners to succeed. At our school, we have collective commitments that, as a group, we decided on. So, we, we discuss these every year. We talk about where we want to go based on our data. So, our first collective commitment is to focus on utilizing the district instructional framework and intentionally plan and focus on student learning. We're providing multiple opportunities for the students to read, write, think, and talk with authentic literacy throughout the day. And the students are able to state what they are learning, why they are learning it, and how they will know they have learned it. The second commitment that we have is that we're going to plan collaboratively and intentionally to understand, differentiate, and deliver benchmark-aligned instruction. And then, the third one is that we're going to utilize Science Wednesdays to support the science standards through reading, writing, math, and hands-on experiments.
That's a weird smell. I'm sorry.
It smells like an electrical burn.
It does. I don't know. Do you want to pause for a minute?
I think Mr. Carr may be right outside the door.
Okay.
I saw him out there just a second.
This could be the first time the heater's popped on this year, possibly. Could be. I don't know why, but it smells like you're burning off dust, yeah.
I was wondering if it's just me, and I looked around, and all of you were like, okay, okay. Stop it.
Mr. Carr, do you think, Mr. Mars, think maybe the heater is on, which, why the heater is on, we're not sure?
That's what it smells like. You know, everybody's going, you know, hot, cold, cold, hot, so...
It's hot there.
So, that does smell, it does smell like heat, true.
Okay.
No fire alarm, so, you know, we're good, so...
Okay, good. Oh, my gosh. Shall we carry?[1735.52] I know, I'm like, you know what, we'll just start again. Just kidding, I'm just kidding. I just want to get the, all clear for Mr. Carr that we can keep going and then we'll keep going. Thank you for being very flexible.
Making my head worse.
I feel sorry for her.
Get through this.
Here we are.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm good.
She's good, she does not want to start over.
I've discussed the collective commitments. They can ask me questions and when they're ready. So the next slide that we go to is how we became a D school. And if you look at it, we have our, across the top is the proficiency score. So in ELA, we were at 37, math 43, and science 33. Next is our learning gains at 44% and 41 in ELA and math. And then our lower quartile was at 36 and 28. Historically, Triangle has been a school that gets a lot of our points from our learning gains in our lower quartile. And I, I feel like this is evidence of the impact that COVID has had on our school because our kids need to be in school. They do not learn well online. And attendance also for us was a huge problem last year. We had 42% of our students were attendance problems. So that, that's a huge number. I know it's, it was in line pretty much with the district as well, but it is big because if they're not there, they're not learning. Now, one thing that I can tell you is that if you add five points to each of those areas, we're no longer a D school. So we can do that. All right, moving on. How do we move forward? So our next slide is on our instructional priority number one. And that is that we're going to deliver explicit intentional benchmark-aligned instruction. The reason that we found the need for this is through learning walks and our benchmark data, it indicated the need for strong core instruction. And one thing that we have put in place for that is planning. I just finished collaborative planning days with each grade level. They're given a day with a substitute for the whole grade level to come together and plan. So they plan for those first two questions of the PLC process. What are, what are they going to learn and how are we going to know that they've learned it? So they're looking at the benchmarks and then they're looking at the assessments, okay? And then we have common planning days, which are Tuesdays and Thursdays. For K, K through three, well, K through, yes, K through three, it's ELA on Thursdays and math and science on Tuesdays that they plan. Some of my grade levels, they're great about coming together on other days because they feel the need to discuss what they're learning, but it's only mandated for the two days. We also have third, fourth, I mean, fourth and fifth. They have math and science. They rotate if they're in math because we're, we're, what's the word?
Departmentalized.
Departmentalized, thank you. We are departmentalized in fourth and fifth. So then if they teach math and science, they do math on Tuesdays and they do science on Thursdays. I do have a science coach that I've put in place this year for third, fourth, and fifth. So she works closely with those three grade levels with the hopes to build because we all know that while we can address something this year, to fix it this year, we need to be looking at the long-term plan and how it grows. And it takes a good three to five years for something to actually come to fruition. And, you know, it's being focused on those goals and maintaining that focus over the few years. The next priority that we have is providing interventions to support the benchmark-based instruction and accelerate progress of the students. So our student proficiency is below 50% in all content areas. And if we meet the needs of all of our students through differentiation and intervention, we can increase our proficiency. So we're looking at all students, not just our lower quartile. And that is done through our walkthrough intervention. So we use our data. We took the beginning of the year data, iReady. We triangulated the iReady data, the FAST and STAR data, as well as what the teachers are seeing because sometimes students just don't test well. So if we have a student that we need to accelerate and push them into higher grade, the teacher helps us make that decision. But as a grade level, we sit down and we put it all up. And it's interesting, it's really great to see the process. I would love for anybody to come in and see it. But when you have it up and you have it in these pocket charts and you can see we have this many kids in the red and the blue, it's amazing because the teachers, you talk about high expectations, that's a visual for them. And I had teachers go, oh my goodness. So just to know that we have so many kids starting out in the red and, in the, in the blue and the green, we can push those kids in proficiency, we can push them to the fours and the fives. So that's, it's a, it's a good process. And then the lower kids, we're looking at what are their gaps? So it may be that even in third, fourth, and fifth, we need to work on phonics with them. So we do the walk to intervention where the kids go where they need the help. And we have teams. I have, on my budget, I utilized it a lot for personnel because I truly believe that people are the best resource. And so I have a K-2 intervention team, I have a 3-5 intervention team. And while those teacher assistants are pushing in for interventions, they're helping with interventions, but at the same time, when interventions are not happening, happening in K-2, they're pushing into classrooms and helping with small group instruction as well. So they are in a classroom all day long, helping push those kids and accelerate them. The desired outcome, well, I don't have it in here, but another thing that we are working on is, and it does have to do with behavior, and that is, we have implemented this year zones of regulation. So we're using that. We have put zones in our master schedule so that it is built into the schedule for the first 10 minutes of the morning. We're trying to build a culture of learning for the kids, for the teachers, and that high expectation of we are here to learn. So we start our day every morning, I get on the announcements, I make an announcement, I talk about our core values that we have implemented this year. And then I turn it over to the teachers to get in the zone, so to speak. And at that time, they're working on talking about behaviors and how we treat each other. They're doing restorative practices with the students as well. And I do, I do see an improvement in behavior. As Superintendent Carnegie said, it's generally, when we look at our data, our, our referrals are down, although there's still more than I would like to see. It's generally from the same 10 students. We have about four students that we are running around campus with all day long. So it, it keeps you busy and, you know, and you have to write referrals on that so that you can document what's going on. But the, the zones, I do believe has helped quite a bit. We do golden tickets for the kids so that they get recognition for their good work throughout the week. And they come up to the office and they get to pray through the office and all of the ladies in the office ring bells for them and sign little coupons for them, give them manatee dollars. And that builds a lot of, of just pride in their work. We also have a mighty manatee which goes out to the teachers every week. So we go down and we announce it over the intercom and we present them with a trophy that we've, that we've made. And it's good for the culture. The teachers feel good about it. The teachers actually have input on who the mighty manatee is going to be for the week. And, you know, it's, it's, it's very positive. Then the action steps that we have put in place, as I said, we do collaborative planning, which is a, a day of planning, and then we also have common planning. With the UNISIG money, I brought in additional coaches for K through two and the 3 through 5 science coach. My feeling on that is that we have, we do have a lot of turnover this year. We have actually, I have third, I think it's 33 new teachers on campus, 15 of which are less than three years of experience. So I truly believe that you need to grow a teacher. And our job is to grow them. That's the whole reason why I became an administrator is because I saw the need for teachers to have someone that would grow them and help them with their practice and what they need to work on. So the coaches have a coaching cycle that they go through, much as, as what Nicole had talked about, where they're working with the teachers. We tiered our teachers based on the need of support. Since the beginning of the year, we have seen teachers move from, we have three tiers. So we've moved teachers from tier three to tier two and tier one. So we are seeing progress with those teachers in that area. We have Manatee University, which is for our new teachers. And every two weeks, we meet with them and work on things like classroom management, just talking about the team expectations for their evaluations, working with them on their DPPs, and any of the professional learning that we need to do based on what we're seeing as trends when we walk through the classrooms. We have professional development opportunities that are happening throughout the year. Recently, we've done questioning, prompting, and queuing because while we saw through our learning walks that they were circulating, we didn't see the questioning happening with the circulating. So they weren't circulating with the intent of building the understanding of the students and increasing their engagement with each other on the task. We've also done the science of reading, six ELA expectations. We've done work on zones of regulations, PBIS, discipline protocols, the instructional framework, common planning protocols, restorative practices, number talks, explicit instruction, Skyward. And we have a book study that we're doing. It's actually Teach Like a Champion 3.0. And the reason we chose that book is because it has a lot of instructional strategies in it that as we see the need for it, it's easy to just say, let's go to. So for example, it might be the one on circulating. And we talk about that and they can read that and put some things into practice. So the other thing, the data chats, like I said, we take time to go over the data. We have also put in place student data notebooks. And the teachers are working with the students to set goals and keep track of what they are doing. The tiered teacher support, like I said, we have three tiers. And the coaches meet with me weekly so that we can discuss where the teachers are and who needs the most support and what support we can actually put in place for them. And overall, we're just trying to create that culture of learning for everyone, not just the students, but the teachers as well. Our evidence of implementation is in our lesson plans. We have planning protocols that we put in place, so it's the Triangle way of doing it. Systems that we put in place. For example, TDQs, that's text-dependent questions. So in every lesson, we plan out text-dependent questions that can be used. And it's a question that you can ask to further their learning. And then we have scaffolding that we do. If they're not getting it, how can we scaffold them to get it without giving them the answer? And then we also talk about the collaborative techniques that we're going to use with those questions. And that helps a lot with our newer teachers that don't understand because when we plan for those, we also discuss how we would do that and what it looks like. They also do some modeling of what a lesson, how would I model this for the students? Or what is this going to look like when we do the independent task? So that we're always discussing those things in planning. By doing the collaborative planning days where we can talk about the, the what and the why on those days, when we meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we can talk about what are we doing if they get it and what are we doing if they don't get it? So that we're able to move forward with that as well. And coaching logs and calendars are done weekly. Classroom learning walks are done weekly. And the student binders are done every Wednesday, the data binders. Our evidence of impact. Students are going to show a minimum of one year's growth as a result of strong core instruction and will receive intervention to close grade level gaps. Evidence is going to be collected through the progress monitoring tool. It will be very interesting to find out how STAR and FAST align with the, the new progress monitoring that they're doing, how it shows us if iReady is aligned with it at all. The learning walk data and the trends also will show the evidence of impact as well as our common assessments. We do believe that every student deserves a great teacher, not by chance, but by design. And that is our, our philosophy with our planning as well. Look real quick and see if there's anything. We have a lot of support from our regionals. We have assistance in common planning. Susan Emmerich and as well as Sabrina's team push in with us. The DA team comes and visits us weekly. They do walks, if not weekly, bi-weekly, learning, learning walks. And we get feedback from them on what they're seeing. And then we, for our teachers, they follow the plan for the literacy block with fidelity. Our hope is that with so many new teachers, that if they're doing with fidelity, we can move to doing it with integrity. Follow instructional framework with fidelity, using wit and wisdom, and also providing standards-based instruction. Our Science Wednesdays are a commitment to focusing on those science, the hands-on science, as well as bringing in reading, writing, and math into the science as well and having that transference. Because if they're reading something, they're learning, let's say they're learning main idea, they should be able to transfer it to content for science as well. And that's what we're looking for, the transference of skills. Number talks, we have done training on number talks for the teachers to do with their math curriculum. And I believe that's, that's all I have to say.
It's a lot, thank you.
It's a lot, so. I apologize if I felt like, if it seemed like I was just. I do have, I can share with you what the BSI team had to say when they came. So after they came, they said that there is evidence of collaborative planning. Triangle has created the pencil to support teachers with the planning and purpose of the intended learning. While we have seen evidence of anchor charts and exemplars posted, we did not observe the teachers or students referencing the learning tools. So that was something that we have been working on since that visit. And when they came for, last week for a walk, they did see evidence of it. Teachers are focusing on the daily benchmark and task, but need to support with connecting the purpose. So one of the things that we have that we use in our planning and we use it in the classroom, we call it the pencil, but basically it's the stacked benchmarks. So we have the benchmarks so that the teacher can refer to that to set the purpose. And it also helps the kids with understanding the direction they're going in because at the bottom of the pencil is the task, the, the task that they're going to need to do for the end of the unit. And so one of the things they asked us to do in planning was to make sure that the teachers had a full understanding of the stacked benchmarks and how to use that to drive the purpose. They said that in math and science, teachers were aligned to pacing of the curriculum and it was evident that teachers have common planning. Students were given opportunities to interact with each other. However, the task given did not meet the full intent of the benchmark. So that goes back to looking at the tasks that's, just because it's in the textbook does not mean it's aligned to the full intent of the standard. But then also, you're not always going to see the full intent of the standard because the, the clarifications, the way the benchmark is broken down, you're not going to be at the full intent at every point when you're teaching. You have to build their knowledge to get them to the, to the full intent. They did say that, they shared with us the Big M, which was nice. That's our mathematics, the best instructional guide for mathematics. And they are utilizing, the teachers are now utilizing that. And the school base, they advised us to have the school-based coaches revise the planning expectations to focus on intentional learning of the benchmarks, which we have done. And they sat in on our, the most recent one was last week, I believe it was on Thursday. They sat in on that planning, they zoomed into it and were very impressed with, with what we were doing. So I do feel good about the direction that Triangle is moving in and the feedback that I'm getting from the state as well.
Good. Board members, questions?
Because mine are short.
Okay.
So there's a common, there's a common denominator between the two presentations and presentations.
Yes.
Which is, one is 33 new teachers per person as far as percentage, do you have a sense about that?
I had, as far as percentage, it's about 50% of my students. I'm 50% of my teachers, I'm sorry. Yes.
So obviously you know that's a problem. And then I, do the two of y'all collaborate at all? Because some of your approaches are similar and, and maybe there's something you said I like better than you, and it's something you said better? Do y'all collaborate, the two of you?
That's something we're getting ready to start with the two schools. Kathy's sending some of your coaches over to the other school to observe what they're doing in planning and then vice versa. So I just talked to both principals a couple of weeks ago about starting that process to have some of those, what you just said, some of those pieces. Hey, because maybe this school's doing us a little bit differently. Why don't you come over and look at that? And then we want to start bringing the coaches together to start working together so that they can support the schools and some of those similar pieces that you, that we've kind of talked about a little bit today. So that is on the, that is in the making.
And then did we decide you were going to come back to us again?
Yes, sir. That was the request to come back.
The one thing I would ask is, I'm more of a numbers guy. So if you had some of the numbers, that would be great.
I had tons of numbers in my presentation and I was told to take them out because less is more, so. I will be glad to share that with you.
Mr. Brandenburg?
No, I would agree. There's a lot of similarities between the two, but one thing that stood out to me, and I think it's just different words for similar things, but the collective commitments was really, was really important to me and just that buy-in with it. But one word that you said over and over and over that I really, really like is intention, intentional, and how you're putting that into what you're doing. I, I just have more comments than anything, but it's, I, I like the trajectory. I think you've got a good plan and it's just a matter of. I think you've got a good plan and it's just a matter of seeing that growth over the next one, two, three, five years and executing on that plan. But I like the direction both these schools are going in. Let us know, we can support you because I think you've, you've got the first step and now it's just getting students to achieve. And however we can help you do that, let us know. Thank you.
Mrs. Cunningham?
I really, really like your last statement about students deserving a great teacher and that happens by design because that's really true. You have to create a plan to make sure that they get a good teacher. I heard a lot of really good things. I would like to hear a little bit more about the extent to the way you're using some of them. For example, the student notebook, that's a powerful, powerful tool. I'd like to hear more about how the students are interacting with it and how, and maybe that's already happening, perhaps I should come and visit and then I can see that and I wouldn't have to ask those questions. But I know how powerful that can be. So I'm very interested and very pleased to hear that, that you're utilizing that. I like the idea of the different coaches focusing on the specific subject matter. I would offer just a little bit of a tweak on your, on your coaches a little bit. And certainly, anything that I say to you is simply just an observation. Of course, you know your school best, you know what works. But one of the things that I have found or that I found was very successful. For example, with your science, because we know that all grade levels don't, don't take science. Sometimes it's a good idea to concentrate on the ones, the first half of the year or up until testing time, the ones that are actually going to take the test. Because then the coaches can double down with those teachers. They can be more intentional, one of our favorite words. They can be more intentional about those skill sets that that particular group of kids who are actually going to sit for the exam that they don't have. And then after the test, then they can double down on that next grade level moving up. And you have more data because they've had more opportunities to take assessments. And usually, that turns into a pretty good plan. It's not a new plan, it's just a slight deviation from what you're doing. I certainly think you might get more bang for your money if you thought about that.
Well, she does, so the, my science coach, she plans with third, fourth, and fifth, but she spends a lot of time in my fifth grade classrooms.
Very good.
Because that's where I need her right now.
Right.
So she is working with them, coaching them, she is modeling for them. And because two of, two of those teachers are tiered as need for support.
Right.
Based on state fam scores.
Yeah.
So the idea is that I have heavy coaching with both of those. And my math coach also is in there with them as well.
I think that goes back to your statement. That's part of that design to give every student a good teacher, that you provide whatever supplemental help they might need to get them to that point. So excellent, I like that a lot. I hope that there's going to be more planning during the days with substitutes. I think teachers appreciate the fact that they can spend all their energy and not have to worry about making sure everybody got to lunch and all that good stuff.
We do it quarterly.
Okay. The other thing that I would tell you, going back to Groveland, is that, you know, the culture in your school is perhaps the most important aspect of anything that happens. If your culture is off, you might as well, you know, kind of forget it. I didn't hear, I heard some things about your culture. And I haven't been on your campus this year, but I was there last year. I would really like to hear a little bit more about what you're doing to. I heard about the zones, which I think is excellent. What you're doing to set, to turn the culture such that everybody comes ready to learn. And you know, sometimes parents aren't going to show up in, in schools like, and I'm going to say ours. Sometimes they don't show up. But you have to do in spite, you have to create that while you're here, this is what happens and this is the environment. And here, you're valued and your education is important and, and you know, we're going to work on that. And I think this is true for both schools, not just Triangle. I think it's true for any school. But for a school with high needs, it's more important. I think if you just keep hacking away at what you're doing, hopefully. I believe in perseverance. You know, you have to keep your eye on the prize. And I think if you do that along with implementing these strategies that both of you have talked to us about today, I think you'll see good results. I would like to see you set that aim a little bit more than five points in each of those areas, though.
Oh, no, I, trust me, I set it for an A as well. I know exactly how many points I need for an A.
Let's don't sell ourselves short.
Yes, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, hey. So I had a couple of questions as well. And the benefit here is that you've had some of them answered. I think that, you know, if I was having flashbacks to some of these presentations in prior years, the board was desiring that we see these in more of a consistent format. And I think that would probably help the data piece, you know, because one school might provide this piece, one school, and then it's hardly necessarily compared with all the apples, so the oranges there. But for me, that'd be another, another good one to look at, particularly compared to prior years, just to look at trends. A question about the science Wednesdays. So is that supplemental to science instruction during the week? Or is this the science instruction?
They have a science block throughout the week.
Okay, so it's not all on one day?
It's all, all Wednesday is built around reading, writing, thinking, talking. And it has to do with whatever the science topic is. And so for example, whatever skill they're teaching in reading, they're teaching it on Wednesday as well, but they're using the science content.
Okay, but they're still doing science Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. I think the, the other, the other piece of this that I, I had a big question on is, obviously, these instructional priorities, I don't think are really new. I think you've probably been doing these things already.
Last year.
Delivering explicit intentional benchmark and aligned instruction, providing interventions, right? Those things are not new. And so for me, it's, so what is the new component to make this more effective? To see these deliver results?
The deliverables that we have in planning. So for example, the expectations of planning, you know, and moving towards the entire PLC process. Because it's, it is a process, getting it in place. So we spent a lot of time looking at the benchmarks last year and like, what are we teaching? And how are we going to know? We didn't really seem to get to the part of what are we going to do if they have it? And what are, what are we going to do if they don't? So that's, that's where we're, we're moving towards. And then also, like I said, just having systems where everyone's on the same page as far as, you know, the expectations for what they bring to planning, their participation in planning. And then walking classrooms to make sure that what we're talking about in planning is actually happening in the classroom.
All right, very good. The common assessments that you all are using, are they different than what is occurring in Groveland?
We, we use the blueprints and, and just as Nicole said, we look at. So for example, wit and wisdom, it's a lot of material.
Mm-hmm, I know.
What you have to do is you have to look at what is going to be the most important thing to pull out of the lesson? And making sure that you're hitting that and then making sure that that assessment at the end is also going to be hitting that as well, so that it's aligned to what you're doing. Wit and wisdom tends to build, like the lessons that you do builds towards the final focus question task.
End of module task.
End of module task.
Right, right.
Yes, so it builds towards that. So you just need to make sure that the tasks that you choose are the ones that are going to build towards that task.
That's right. So your, your school is identifying those?
Yes.
And then your school's identifying those. Are these coming from the blueprint? I mean, are, are you like, is, it's been a long time since I've looked at a blueprint.
I think it's more so, it's more so not identifying, because they're already identified. So the task is the task, but there, like she said, there's a lot of them. What we're trying to do is truly pick the task that is getting us to the end result without doing all the other stuff. It's, it's so the task is already in there, but we wanted to make sure, one, the task is aligned. And then two, that we are building the correct scaffolds to get our students where they need to be.
Okay.
And then as far as math goes, we have a new curriculum this year. So the district does have, so if there's things that you find, they do have a Google where you can.
Slide deck.
Slide deck where you can put in the things that you're finding. And there's a lot of communication going on between the coaches and the district personnel. So we're working on that as well, together.
Sure. I guess I'm just, just trying to get, get further understanding of what work you're having, you're doing at your school versus what's going on here? And I guess what the ultimate product that the kids are seeing, you know, they've.
Well, I think the biggest part of the planning is more just the teachers' understanding of the standards and what they're, what they need to do to get the students there.
Right.
Because if they don't have an understanding of the standard, then they're just doing the lesson without intent.
Spot on, all right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't have any questions other than the one that I asked Mrs. Moses as well. Is there any additional support that you think that we could provide? You're laughing.
Well, I'm laughing. Yeah, I, I thought I got another TA allocation. I have, and come to find out, it was just moved from one budget to another. But I have 97, and I don't think this is just me, I think this is district-wide a problem. But I have 97 ELL students. I have two teacher assistants for ELL. I received a resource teacher this year, but I'm being told that I cannot use her to work with students. She has to coach the teachers, which I'm okay with, I believe in coaching. But I would love to see us have more support for those ELL students if there's any way possible to do that.
Is that in line with our allocations formula?
Yes.
That's driven by statute for every.
It's, it's. As far as the, the allocation formula, having two TAs for 97 ELLs is in line with the allocation formula.
That sounds like our allocation formula needs to work then. Because I mean, we can certainly exceed state statute, right?
Sure, and we do in most cases. And that's just a matter of, I don't know if you've made that request, but anytime a principal has, has said, I need this, we've, you know, we've. So this is the first I was hearing that you had asked for one or that you're wanting one. So I don't know if this is the first that anyone else has heard that, but we can certainly look at that. And I see Ms. West in the back and.
According to the allocation formula, it has to be students speaking the same language. And if they are, then we get with them every later and we'll make sure that you are.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. And I, you know, appreciate both of your focus on core instruction. I think that it's very smart, intentional planning is a very smart approach. Reasonable, smart approach as well. And I love the focus on teaching and coaches and the support that you're providing for your staff. So I really appreciate that very much. Did you have anything you wanted to add? See, I didn't forget.
No, I just want to thank you both for your leadership and, you know, you. I, I see, I see the intentionality, I feel it when I walk on your campus that, that. You might have 33, 33 new teachers, but the 33 teachers that are dedicated to your kids. And it's, it's great to see the things that are happening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. Thank you very much. Okay, we are on 3.02, which is our Skyward update. Ashley and Dwayne?
Ashley. So if you remember, several months ago, this was one of the priorities that we had with our ESTR funding, that we wanted to move from Skyward to Focus, a new student information system, which has made a lot of people happy, excited about what a new system will bring for us in terms of access of, of data and ease of use. And so this wonderful IT team is here to give you an update on where we are with that conversion. It is a, certainly a huge undertaking, but you wouldn't know it based on how we're seeing it roll out, so.
Thank you for the opportunity. And so we're going to go through a couple of things. The first part, I'm going to, before I introduce Ashley here and talk about the good work that she's done, I'm going to go through the project sort of high points where we are, kind of a status, who it's going to benefit, what our approach has been. And then we're actually going to do something that, well, may work out. We'll give it a try. It's going to be a live demonstration of the system as it is. Those are always, those are always fun because as you can imagine, this is in various states, but we're looking pretty good. So first thing, first, that I do think is important is to introduce Ashley Rosa. Ashley Rosa is a coordinator of our data systems. And so she is probably one of the most joyful warriors I've ever met when it comes to doing this type of work. And I think one of the things that's been very, very important is, is that if you think about what's, like, school districts are really required to do, state reporting in Florida is unbelievably complicated. Like, I think it's kind of a testament to a lot of folks out there, our data clerks, our principals, our administrators. How easily it looks in Lake County, but that doesn't mean it is. And then on top of that, to be in one system, doing kind of sort of the day-to-day operations you would be expecting, and then be building another system simultaneously, is to some extent, even though there are different types of work, double the work. And so I think probably more masterfully than anybody I've seen ever in a project like this, she's been able to balance not dropping something that's going on on the day-to-day. We just recently passed survey two, that will generate a good chunk of our funding. So it's kind of important. It will start to feed into some of our accountability measures, but she is also working with our teams to build the new student information system. So you will see, there's all kinds of interesting stuff. We had stuff to get rid of, so we gave it to y'all. And so you'll see hand sanitizer, a pen, and a Rubik's cube. The most random stuff we've ever, we're just cleaning out. We're just cleaning out our desk drawers at this point. But like, I guess the thing I was going to say.
Is that what sold the deal?
Yeah, somebody was like, did that? I was like, no. It's like, it's going to take something different than a Rubik's cube. But what we did get is a good system. And so the other thing that we put on your, basically, hopefully, on your desk there is kind of an overview of the project. And this is the same overview that we sort of brought you all in the beginning because our plan hasn't really changed. And so what I'm going to do is go through some pieces of it and then we're going to sort of show the system off. So obviously, your cover page is your cover page. And the second part was kind of the background of why we purchased the system. Just as a little bit of a history, it may seem like ancient history. We purchased this back in February. And so realistically, you know, we're not that far into the project. I will say that we have an aggressive timeline because our goal is to go live in July of 2023. That sounds like a long time. It's, it's not on our calendar these days. It's, it's quickly, quickly eclipsing. But I think the thing that is interesting about it is, is that we are very, very far along in the project. But the background, if you remember, just to kind of sort of go over that for just a quick second, is that we really heard from the users. I, I'll say this, is that because it is more work, I don't know that anybody, it's always weird to me if somebody goes, I really want to do a conversion just because I want to do a conversion. There has to be a driver, right? And the driver was our data clerks, the driver was our administrators. And at first, we had basically had some conversations. Would you all like to see what another system would do? And most people said no, because they didn't want anything to change. And if you remember, that was during a pandemic year. After they saw it, that really almost seesawed on us and really quickly became like a driver for us. And so this is part of that reason. But what I want to talk today a little bit about is some of the benefits and sort of show some of this, put some proof behind it to some extent. And when we looked at it on the next page, the benefits to us were very, very, I'm sorry, one more, one back. What will happen is, is that the benefits to us were very, very important simply because like, we wanted to make sure people didn't just feel like they got a newer, shinier system or something that felt marginally better. We wanted to make sure that we had something that really, really did sing for the people that are going to be using it on a daily basis. More specifically, I will say this, and this is an important thing and it gets a little bit operational. But we heard in some of the earlier conversations how it directly ties into when you're looking for data and things of that nature. Like, the number one complaint we heard about Skyward to some extent is, is that it was very difficult to get data out of. And when you're talking about attendance data, discipline data, and being able to look at that in as close to a real time as you need to, like, really? That can be a little bit of a disadvantage if there's a fog around the data to some extent. The other thing that we've been very committed to is, is that you'll see this in our project approach, is this basically means breaking every process in the current student information system and reforming it in the other. And that sounds daunting or terrifying to some extent. It's actually one of the most healthy things an organization can do. And the reason for that is, is that some of our processes are us recording information to record information, to give it to somebody to type in. And we were able to reduce some of that work and we'll talk about that. Really, the four groups that I do want to kind of sort of focus in on, and we'll talk about this first, is that it was important for us to provide some more conveniences for teachers in the gradebook. Probably one of the first things that we heard is a lot of people who are using Google Classroom on a daily basis for good instruction that is aligned, that it kind of meant that you had to transcribe some grades over here to some grades over here. And I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but we'll talk about this as we show the project off. Anytime you can save somebody a keystroke or two, if they're doing it thousands of times a day or, or a week or a month, is real time saved. And so there will be a Google Classroom integration that will automatically give the, or actually, the teachers will be able to have their hands on it if they would like to. They can bring the grades over for certain assignments, they can create an assignment in their gradebook, it will automatically create in Google Classroom, and the two will talk. And I think that's kind of an important piece. There's also some other things that we'll look at in the gradebook that I think it just does better to some extent. Gradebooks have a tendency to be gradebooks, but this one's got some pretty neat stuff. I think for the data clerks, this was near and dear to my heart and we'll talk about this. There's a lot of integrations that we will build. And we will, as that job is so complicated, it is a very technical. I'm an unapologetic advocate for data clerks. And one of the things that I will tell you is their work is very technical. If you don't believe it, try losing one at a school. And one of the things that I will tell you is their work is very technical. If you don't believe it, try losing one at a school and then getting called for a sub, because it is very, very difficult to get anybody to sit in that. However, one of the things we looked at, when we looked at the processes, a lot of extra work was going on. And it could be tied back to the system that we currently had. And so we'll talk about that in a little bit. I think for administrators, counselors, and specialists, the number one thing is, how can we get this data where we can do something with it, not spend a bunch of time? I think we've done some good work in bringing the data systems to the people, but I think there was more work to do, and we just kind of hit a limitation on that. So real fast, just to kind of go through the project itself and where we are. So we bought it, like I said, we started buying it in January, put it on the board, bought it. That was easy. And then what we did is we started moving data. There are millions and millions of records. In fact, some records that are just kind of benign, and to some extent, you're just like, whatever. Like, if you think about the attendance record, that is a hundred and eighty records for every student in the district that is or ever was for one year. And so you take that and you multiply forty-five thousand times a hundred and eighty, or it's really more like fifty thousand if you count the inactive students, you've got a ton. And then you start backfilling in those years. But we did that. In fact, I can report pretty happily, although she wishes it was higher. She's, we're always looking at this number. So they give us a number of like, what percentage of the data has been moved? And right now, we're at about ninety percent. We had ninety. We've not got it, we're looking for that ninety-one or ninety-two. It's kind of stalled at ninety for a second. But a lot of this data is being moved over on a nightly basis. So in a weird way, focus, to some extent, has kind of started to live now, because we're moving things like attendance data, demographic data, enrollment data on a nightly basis. We brought in twenty-five, and I think this is the secret sauce to the entire recipe to some extent. We brought in twenty-five business owners, and you're like, what is that? So whether it was ELL, we started with them first, they have a tendency to be a little bit more of a complicated reporting process. If you've ever been involved, like, it starts the second a student registers. And so we brought them in, and we basically looked at all their existing processes. The first one, I'm not going to lie, was a little bit long. It was about two weeks. It was just kind of one of your first ones. They came in, they explained every single rule that they had. We looked at how they did it in Skyward, and then we looked at how the new system would do it. And they were like, how can we start to cut out steps? How can we make this easier on the people who are having to manage it? What reports would be useful to school administrators? And so we did that twenty-five times over, and a lot of people in the room sitting behind me have been brought into this conversation. We met with ESC, we met with ELL, we met with almost anybody that would meet with us. That's how we kind of are to some extent. We started to validate the data. We've just given that kind of a start, and we have started redefining the processes. And so really, what's going to happen is, in July, we're going to have a bunch of new, hopefully finely tuned processes. And what's probably the most exciting is that in November, we're going to start the training. And so what will happen is, is that if we're going to go live in July of two thousand twenty-three, the first thing that we have to do is we have to schedule for July, and that starts in January. And so this thing starts the process of slow-moving to go live. And so data clerks will get there first. We actually have a golden ticket. It's actually a golden ticket to some extent. And basically, what they'll do is they'll receive that, and that is the early adopter training for like, data clerks. And then we will be bringing in administrators in, starting in November and December. It's kind of this lull pocket, if there is such a thing in education anymore. And then in January, we will actually start the process of scheduling in the new system, which is pretty, pretty exciting to some extent. Like, it's a little scary, but we're that far along in it. And then, of course, just to kind of sort of round out, in January through June, we will continue to build these processes, and we will actually go in and start the mass amount of training. So a lot of those people. Training teachers, not going to lie, a little difficult. They're off during the summer. As a teacher, I had developed a pretty good case of amnesia of whatever happened the year before, to some extent. So sometimes, training people right before they leave to some extent doesn't necessarily always particularly work, but we've got some pretty creative strategies. We'll talk about that as we get a little bit closer. And then, like I said, it will go live in July. So now for the slightly scary part, we're going to go in and look at the system, so you can kind of get a little bit of an idea of what the system looks like. And so when you log into the system, if you've ever logged into Skyward before, it can be angry to some extent. It's definitely more of a computer program-looking thing. And so this is a little bit more friendly. And what I'm going to do is, right now, we're logged in, is a view that would be similar to an administrator or things of that nature. So what you can see over here is, is that the menu.
Is there anybody get this on our screens? Are those not working? I just think this part would be helpful if we could.
No, they're not on.
So we'll wait for that and see if there's.
He said they should be. That's what I was wondering, is it on? I think they might just be turned off.
This was off. I just turned it on.
Sorry, everyone.
No, you're fine. There's nothing on it, though, even when it's turned on. It says no signal, so.
Are we doing something better or not? Should we keep going?
Press your button.
Thank you. Up, right, right back here. Look, Mr. With eyes, right here. That first one, right there. First one, nope, other side. Close to the other. There you go. Nothing's on it, so. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good deal. So over on the left-hand side, you will actually see the menu. And so basically, there's all kinds of good stuff in there, scheduling, how to add a student, all that type of stuff. But most importantly, I think one of the things that's really great about this, this application is, is that it, it actually pushes information to you. And we can define what that information is. So if you think about the old way that you would run a report in the past, it's like somebody had to go in, you had to run it, you had to actually do something with it. You had to know to run it to some extent. These are basically scheduled reports that we can push to the user and go, hey, you've got five new ELL students today, so let's get the testing underway. Hey, you've got four kids that have been added that are going to be, that potentially could be ESC. And there, and when you think about that, when you have that ability, you can start to create a workflow within the school to where it's no longer the data clerk at the registration process telling you, basically via post-it note or something like that, you've got these four students, you're able to, as soon as the data is entered, start separating and getting the work done. And that can create a huge efficiency, because sometimes you're just waiting for something to hit your desk. And it just, it's one of those things that there's a few little steps, and it makes a big deal. Right now, you will see that Taveri's High should panic. It has three hundred and ninety-eight new referrals. But I have to caution you, that's because we've imported them, and to some extent, they're not actually being authored in the system, so it's just giving us that alert that we pushed three hundred and ninety-eight. These sites refresh every day. So in a normal day, you would hope to see four or five new referrals. And as an administrator, that would be a heads up, hey, I've got referrals that I need to be taking a look at. And you can even separate by administrator, depending on how you're doing it. Like, if I get the ninth grade, then I get my referrals, and I can see the ones that I've got, tenth grade, so on and so forth. We were just putting that in there. The other thing that's kind of nice, too, is that it starts to basically tell me, teachers have not taken attendance. As a teacher, one of the things that was interesting, I may not have been a hundred percent when I took attendance all the time. And so this alert, if I click on this alert, it will actually go in, and it will generate a report that will tell me the teachers that have not taken attendance for period one. And so there is the option, in this particular case, if I click on it as a data clerk, it will take me right to the screen that I can go ahead and take the attendance in. So again, it's not like running a report to have to go dig in and find the attendance. It's like, hey, here's a list of everybody who hasn't taken attendance. Bam, let me click on it. Let me take attendance for them, because they've got a sub or something like that in this nature. So kind of a quick, fast way. I think one of the things that we really like about Focus is that reports are interactive. They're not just running something. It's like, run something and do something with it.
Okay, so if, if I'm the data clerk, and I look, and I see that a teacher hasn't taken attendance, and then I'm not going to go take attendance? I'm just going to hit the button and take attendance for them?
Well, you could. You have the option. The other thing that you can do is you can actually email the teachers with one button and let them know, hey, you need to take your attendance for period one. It just depends. Sometimes when there's a substitute, they go ahead and get this sub list, and they're like, yeah, I know, and they just want to clear the list. But it does give you that option.
Say everyone's in class? What if somebody's like, not in class?
Well, in this case, no. You would always do some feedback from the teacher. Yeah, you would do something. But if, usually what happens in that situation is you have like a sub folder or something like that that's come in, and that usually falls sometimes to the data clerk, because they don't grant that substitute always access to the system. So it would just be a situation, just a heads up. But that option is there, right? And I think that's kind of an important thing. I think the other thing, too, is it starts to tell me basically who's absent, if anybody's dropped, things of that nature. One of the things, too, that is a big deal to me at least, and then we'll get into the teacher view for a second, is, is that finding a student, and this doesn't seem like a big deal, but right now, like, I think it's ten digits or something like that, we have a ten-digit student identifier. And so part of that is kind of nice, but not really, to some extent. It masks the student ID. And of course, all the student data that we show you has basically been jumbled up. It's not real, it's real students. It's, you'll never know the names, because they've basically messed them all around, so I'll give that disclaimer. But in Skyward, if you don't know that ten-digit number, a lot of people are cutting and pasting that in there, and it's a lot of extra work. And if you have to type it, it's a lot of typing. Here to find a student, if we hit the enter button real fast into the search screen, and do me a favor, uncheck in Search All Schools. And so when we hit the enter button, what will happen is, is that we'll see the, it looks like fifteen hundred and twenty-one students, so it's pretty fast. That wasn't a very good search, right? Like, it's like I got fifteen hundred kids. So if I go back to the search screen for a second, one of the things I can do, and it seems like a small deal, but if I put in, we'll do it to try, A underscore B.
What are you putting in?
So we're putting A underscore B. I think it's taken, I think there's a little bit of lag in it. But when I put A underscore B, instead of putting in like a ten-digit number, I basically put in three keystrokes, and I went from fifteen hundred students to fifteen students, where I could probably see the student and click on them. The reason why I say that is, is that if you're searching for students hundreds and hundreds of times a day and putting in that ten-digit number, whereas opposed to I can just put in a few keystrokes, it makes a big difference in people's jobs, right? And I could even get more clever to some extent. Like, if I would have put in AN, space, BE, it probably would have hit that student right then and there as a direct match. So the fact that it does searches doesn't, isn't the most important match. So the fact that it does searches doesn't, isn't the most important thing necessarily. It just goes to show you how fast you can actually go in and see it. You'll notice right now.
How did that put the AN help you to narrow it to fifteen?
Yeah.
And if you put B something else.
So originally, yeah, so it's the first name and last name. So for example, like in the case of Antonio, and then like the belt, I think it may have been Belcher to some extent, or whatever it was, then it's basically just first name and last name. So you're no longer having to do some complicated number.
And then you can just do additional, additional.
Correct, yep.
So then you do the AN, then it's going to do the AN first name.
Now, now I got with the AN.
Yeah.
So you're doing this instead of the student number.
Right, right. And so the idea, the idea kind of being that you just do these quick searches, the way we would, the way we would type things to some extent. And they are working on not a complete thing. So real fast, just to kind of go in, I think we're going to go ahead and brave being a teacher for a second. Because I want to show the teacher view.
And Dwayne, that was the data clerk view?
That way, yeah. Well, this is just one of them. We're going to go back to the data clerk in a second. But I want to go ahead and show you what a teacher view would look like. And so, and good news is that it's giving teachers alerts, too. So just like it gave like other people alerts, it's not only telling me, hey, you haven't taken attendance, as a teacher, it's telling me, hey, you need to take attendance. And so if I click there, then I go right to the screen where I can do it. And this is just kind of a good list. Whenever I click on that alert, then it basically lets me, after I've taken attendance, it drops off, so it's kind of like an up-to-the-real-minute type deal. And so you'll notice you can have district school announcements, like grades are due and things of that nature. And the find the student, because they will be able to search for their students and find data relatively easily and quickly, same way. District reports, Lake Information is basically just places that we can put. Focus is always remembering where you go. So if you go to the seating chart a bunch, you don't have to go all the way into the seating chart. You can just click on the seating chart and go. And probably the most important feature of any student information system is the birthday list. Now, I, not going to lie, like, I was a little agnostic to the value of the birthday list, till an elementary school teacher once corrected me and said it is the most important thing, because you cannot go to the treasure chest if you do not know if it's their birthday or something like that. And it also, for users, even though we didn't see it here necessarily, it would let you know if there were staff birthdays, too. And then, of course, a calendar, because every program seems to come with one. But what I want to get into is the gradebook, because I think this is probably one of the more convincing pieces. Now, the things I'm going to show you are options. So what I show you is things you can do. It's a different conversation as we start meeting with business process owners around the gradebook, of things we should do. But more options is always better. And so we're going to go into the gradebook. The grade book kind of works the way any program like this normally kind of would, which is that it's basically, you have the option to add categories. If I want my test to count fifty percent, I can have my test count fifty percent. I was a total points guy. So a lot of times, what I did is that I would just say, everything goes into a pile, but my test might be seventy-five points, and my assignments are twenty-five. Either any of those options, it doesn't matter what you want, those are all available. But what you can see real quick is the gradebook, and I will tell you, the gradebook has some features that I think teachers are going to really like. Besides the Google Classroom integration, one of the things that I can do, as we go in, you'll see the listing of students on the left-hand side. And then if I go over, I see a little notepad, and then right over that, I see a little icon for a person. So if I click on that icon, what this allows me to do is, this is a jump-off point for me to be able to see more information about the student. So you can see, I could see their grades. I could potentially see their test history. I could see a graduation report. I could see their schedules. I could see their absences. So it's kind of nice, because it's just one point in the gradebook, instead of having to go somewhere else in the system. Then, if I talk about how to add an assignment for a second, it's pretty easy. If I go ahead and click on the, well, the plus button, then it gives me the option to create an assignment pretty fast. I just put in the title, put in how many points it's going to be. Hopefully, it keeps going. It's just taking a second. There's a light on the screen. There it goes. That's, I'm glad. I was afraid it was going to stop somewhere else, so. Anyway, you've got the number of points, and then it asks you a question that seems a little nosey, which is the number of questions. We'll come back to that in a second. We'll go ahead and put in the category, which is, in this particular case, probably going to be classwork, which I predefined. One thing I really like about this is it knows if, like, I'm a high school teacher, and I'm teaching four classes of English Four, it will give me the option to put it in every English Four. So it's not me having to sit there and, like, if you get what I'm saying, like, go into every individual gradebook. And for some people, even CTE teachers who have a lot of schedules that are stacked in a period, that makes it a lot easier. So you can see, I can check there. I can put in when it's assigned, when it's due. It's very important why it's due, and I'll show you why in a second, the published date. And then I can put in almost all these kinds of different descriptions. I can put in pictures. I can actually even paste links to the assignment, paste the assignment itself in there. And what's good is, for a parent, all of that is available to the parent portal. And so the parents can see more information. Just while I'm talking about the parent portal for a second, there is something that I'm really excited about. There is a secure and authenticated way to communicate with parents. So right now, there's a lot of other things that are just other systems people use, but there's a lot of concern around those systems to some extent. This has an audit log. It allows me to broadcast to my class, this is due. It allows me to broadcast to my class's parents that this is due, and give that kind of information. And if I have a parent going, hey, I need to know Johnny's grade, I know that you didn't just grab some email account and are just trying to get Johnny's grade, or get me into a conversation that might compromise some data. It's all authenticated, because we authenticate who gets access to the parent portal. Now, with that said, I'm going to go ahead and hit save, or not in this case, either way. What I want to show you is one of the greatest inventions of probably the modern twenty-first century, I guess. Really invented in the twentieth century, but whatever. So as you can see, I added an assignment. It color codes the assignments, and that's all great. However, how many questions you put? Okay. So you'll notice that I can integrate. I want to point your attention to how well this gradebook is integrated. That little red dot tells me something. Remember it asked me the due date? Well, that lets me know that the kid was absent the day it was due, right? Kind of a key distinction, because there's a difference between a flat-out zero, because I didn't, well, say I was going to do something, or just defied to do it or didn't do it, as opposed to I was absent and I need to make it up. What this does as a teacher is it gives me a heads up that I need to follow after that student, right? I can put it in by point, so if you put in a hundred or something like that, it'll do it. But this is probably one of the things that I think teachers will really approve. And again, it's small steps that equals big steps. You'll notice up here, on the right-hand side, there is another option for me. Now, the gradebook auto-saves, so there's never any risk that you're going to like lose your grades, because you didn't hit the save button or something like that, which, if you've ever done that, trust me, it's for real. There is a questions correct. And so let's go ahead and click on that. And if you remember, how many questions did we have?
Twelve.
Twelve. So let's give them an eleven. So I think I've given this speech for the better part of ten years. So throughout time, teachers have been basically issued one plastic slidey thing that they keep in their desk drawer. And if you've ever been a teacher, you know exactly what I mean. It's the Easy Grader Pro something. I don't even know what, anyway. So the good news is, this thing is your online slidey thing to a large extent, because it knows that you put those questions in there. And I'm going to tell you again, it sounds like a small thing, but if you've ever sat there with a pile of papers and that slidey thing, it is a real struggle to some extent. In fact, I think you can get lazier, because that was always my goal as a teacher, just be more efficient, I suppose. Is that questions incorrect. And so what it can do is, I don't have to sit there and go through all the math and figuring out sixteen minus two is fourteen, or anything like that, and go, you missed two, you missed three, you missed four. And it's going to go ahead and automatically calculate and add it. Again, it doesn't sound like a big thing, but it is, there's little pieces that do matter to some extent. Again, it doesn't sound like a big thing, but it is, there's little pieces that do matter to some extent. Now, with that said, I think the next part will either excite you or terrify you. So some parts of these things maybe need a little bit more thought about just missing questions, right? So if I have a writing assignment throughout time, I've had a rubric. And I think grade books have never done very well with rubrics in general, simply because like, it's like, what do you do with it? And the rubrics are great because they provide a lot of powerful information, not only to the student, but potentially if you could pass it back to the parent portal, to the parent, right? And so we've created, we've gone ahead and created it, we've created a writing assignment, and it actually has a rubric. And so, we'll show you this in a second, but to grade it, what you can do is, is that you can go in, and we've already weighted it, let's go ahead and look at the table view here. And what we can do is, is that this had three particular categories. Now again, I'm not saying this is like a great example, like we're IT people, but this gives you an idea of what it is that we are trying to accomplish. Content, vocabulary, and grammar is what we picked. And we had basically excellent, good, fair, needs improvement, not present. So what we do is, to grade the kid's assignment, basically as we read it, we can click on the rubric and select what we want. And because we've set up the rubric, which is very, very easy to set up, this will automatically generate the grade and translate that to a grade in the grade book, right? When the parent clicks on it, they will be able to see the rubric as the teacher marked it. So if it's like, wait a minute, let me see, because sometimes, I hate to say it, a 75 may not give me enough information for me to be able to really correct it. Here, I will be able to pass that rubric electronically back to the parent, which I think will be a big piece of progress. And these things aren't hard to set up, and once you've set them up, you can just basically kind of cut and paste, you don't even have to cut and paste them, you just assign them to an assignment. So if you have a writing one, you know, so on and so forth, then you can do that, so. Pretty easy view.
Does this also have the opportunity to look at your class demographics per assignment? So like I know on Skyward, I can go into the Chapter 2 test and see that the average score was a 62%.
You do. In fact, to be honest with you, it goes ahead and presents that information at the bottom of the screen in this particular case. Yep, that's what those averages at the bottom are.
I can't see those numbers.
Yeah, I know, it's kind of hard to hear. Trust me, my eyes are worse than yours, I can guarantee.
So her question is one of mine here. Does that just give that information to the teacher or to the parent as well?
I think there's an option there, I need to check into that. We'll have to ask on the parent portal, we haven't gotten quite that deep into the parent portal yet, but.
I appreciate that information as a parent.
Me too, because then I'd be like, oh, okay, you're, you're, this is where you were in relation to the class average. Because you can always come to home and says, everybody failed this test. No, you were 30 points below the average, not everybody failed this test. Or if the class average is a 12, I'm like, okay, yes, everybody did fail the test.
Right.
You know, so there's some accountability there that I like.
Sure. No, that's definitely something we can add, or at least talk to them about.
And then, Dwayne, on the presets and kind of those rubrics and stuff, do you have the ability at the district level to put in a bunch of, I won't call them templates, but then the teacher can go in and make their own from there too?
Yeah, I asked, I asked a guy who worked there about that whenever I first saw the function, and he said there is a way to copy them down. It's not really clean through the interface, but there's a way we can define them and once we get them, we can say, yeah, every teacher gets a writing one potentially.
Yeah, you can add it if needed, okay.
And then, do you have an option in the rubrics? And this is, I, this is interesting to me because I've been doing this through web courses at UCF forever, like the whole rubric piece. But I can choose to make my comments free-form, like where I can write the comments in and assign the grade, or I can assign points, is that, does it get that?
There's definitely a way on every assignment to be able to add a note that the parent would be able to see. It's separate from the rubric piece. The rubric piece basically is kind of the grading piece. But then I could add on addition to that a note to say, hey, this is where I see some areas, you know, for opportunity or things of that nature.
Great.
I think the most important thing is, is that I think it would potentially increase dramatically the communication that goes between parents, right? This is just one feature. Just to show the last part, and then we'll talk about probably a couple of other things, just whet everybody's appetite on it. The reports are really good on this. If we go in, head and go into grades, one of the things that I always used to do is, is that at the end of grading, it's kind of like, okay, well, I've got a list of missing grades, right? And I need to get those missing grades reconciled. And sometimes, they would be in folders and I didn't want to necessarily go student by student. So if I go into reports, there are some neat options here that provide some of, a little bit, there you go. And so, first off, in this particular case, we have a pretty good class because nobody's failing, because we didn't mark them that way. But if we did, I would be able to see my failing grades at a snapshot. Missing grades I can see here. What's neat about this is I could sort this by student. And so like if I was a teacher that had folders, right? Again, small deal, but like it is kind of a big deal. If I had folders for students, by clicking on the student, then what I could do is, I could see, okay, I got this kid's folder, and then I could go in and fill in the missing grades. And I can actually type the missing grades on this report and it will go straight to the grade book, so.
Nice.
Kind of nice. And then, of course, I think one of the other things that's pretty neat about it is, is that it does provide you with some analytics that we will build, things like, basically like bar graphs and stuff like that, so I can start seeing the grade distribution. We're not quite there yet in that project. I want to go ahead and go back to probably one of the biggest features about it though, talking about the ability to pull reports. And so if we go back to a more system admin. Oh, you just lost it. She adjusts. Actually, doing this, one of the things that is a big deal is that it is very, very, how do I say this? Like, important for us to be able to pull this data out sort of freely. Like, I think one of the things in Skyward is, is that most of the data that comes out. It looks like we may have lost the connection here. Well, that was getting wrong.
Just tell us about it.
It's been a great demonstration. Look, he said no, I want to show you.
Well, I know, because it.
I think we're good.
We're good, okay, so.
Oh, okay.
The hand of God saved us, so. All right, so real fast, just to show you, and I think this is probably one of the most important pieces, is how we're gonna get data out. And so I'm gonna show you some of the reporting that almost any user can do. And it's just amazing. So if we go ahead and go to Students, we're gonna go to something known as an Advanced Report. And so this report's not particularly that advanced. Every report always has two components to it. It's who am I looking at, because you don't want to look at everybody, and what am I looking for, right? And so in that data, like is all the truth you need, right? So over on the left, we have basically how we can search for students. And what's neat about this, and we show administrators to this, they're over the moon, to be honest with you, like in our kind of sort of, as I say, focus groups, but you know what I meant. Like, basically people just go in there and they go, this is, this is gonna be game-changing. So when we look at search options, we have search options that just go on and on. And you don't have to be a programmer to know how to do these, right? So for example, if she scrolls up for a second real fast, if I want every, in this case where it varies high, if I want every ninth grader, I just click on ninth grade, right? And I can even get pretty advanced in it. If I go into absences for a second, let's say we pull a report that would be complicated to do in Skyward. There's a product in it or a sort of side module known as data mining. It can be a little bit tough sometimes. What happens here is I go to absences and I just basically go, give me all the unexcused absences between this timeframe and just give me, I don't know, between like 3 and like maybe 999 just to get the ultimate amount of absences anybody would possibly want to do. And with a couple of clicks, I can go ahead and get that. What's nice about this is I can start cross-referencing this with like even attendance data, with discipline data. Give me every kid that has over three absences, who has more than two referrals, who's failing a course according to the grade book now, right? And I'm gonna tell you, the learning curve on it is about like two minutes, to be honest with you, because it's just clicking what you want. Now, if that's the first part, let's go ahead and clear it out so we can get a fresh start to some extent, because we're gonna pull every student. If that's the first part, the second part is, what do I want? And this is a very complicated process that I want to show you. Once you've picked on who, what we're gonna do is, is that we're gonna go ahead and start to pick on, well, what? Maybe, if we don't lose the internet again. It's just coming to get us, isn't it? All right. So over in the middle column are the available fields. And so what I do is, is that I go ahead and pick on who, pick every ninth grader, that's fine, let's keep it flat. We're gonna pick on the student demo. So what happens is, I can type in what field, like name or something like that. But right now, I know it's a student demo. And so what I do, just to get the data that I want, is I drag and drop it over. That's all I do. And so what it is, is that it's basically, you go grocery shopping for data to a large extent. You go, I want the name, I want the grade. Let's see, student ID. And then scroll down a little bit, let's see some of the other data that's available. So in here, you see all kinds of neat stuff. You see address, health screenings, faster data, ELL data, ESE data, on and on and on. Let's go to ESE for a second. Now, keeping in mind, these aren't real students. And so what I could do is, is that I could go in and under ESE, I could start looking at, and this is where I'm gonna kind of drop some of the best news to some extent in a little bit, like the ESE exceptionality, go ahead and click on that, see it. Test accommodations, scroll down, so on and so forth. And do me a favor, go ahead and uncheck Search All Schools in the inactive. And let's run the report. And with a few clicks, what I got is a pretty complicated report. I got every ninth grader, as soon as the screen refreshes, you'll see every ninth grader, and you'll see a list of the ESE information. Trust me, it's more dramatic on this screen right now. It's like just thinking a lot, isn't it? There it goes. Okay. So there's all that information just right there, just that fast. And so what is really neat about this is that if I want to save this report as an administrator, because I want my teachers to spend time doing something with the report, I click on Create Report. I name the report, and with a couple clicks, I can push it out to every single teacher. When the teacher runs it, they just see their students. So they won't see the entire school. And so this is like, hey, this is an area, when we had these conversations, the conversations we're going with the DA schools, it's like, hey, here's something I really want to focus. Keeping in mind, this is a system of record for our attendance data, our discipline data, our test history data. And so I can say, hey, let's create a report where we're really gonna target what we're gonna go after, right? I think these are just things that our current system just doesn't have. And we'll talk about one last part, and then I'll show you one thing for scheduling that's just amazing. But like, one part that is very important for me is, is that it is important for us to get rid of this duplication of work we have, and it's unbelievable. I'm gonna tell you, one of the reasons why the data clerk job is so hard is, I'll give you an example. At an IP, when an IP is constructed, we use a system the state created called PIER. So all that data gets typed into PIER. We then print it, hand it to the data clerk, to be able to put in to Skyward for the purpose of state reporting. So we're recording information to hand it to somebody to record information. We will be building a PIER integration, so that data will come over on a nightly basis into Focus, and so that person does, no longer has to do that. Also, immunization data, which is some of the hardest data to enter because it just goes on and on and on, we will have, for students that have gone to Florida or have been from Florida, have a record with the Florida Department of Health, we will build a Florida shots integration, and that data with one button can be abducted in, and then people don't have to necessarily type it, unless they came from somewhere else, right? Like, there's gonna be some examples where they do. Faster, which is a system that we are required to use by the state to transmit transcripts and things of that nature, there's a faster integration, and it will be able to basically suck in the transcript for any student as long as they went to a Florida school previously. And again, you may not get to 100%, you get to 60 or 70%, you're doing really good. Those are huge pillars of data that people are having to hand-enter that we can do smarter and reduce some of the workload on people. And to be honest with you, get a higher quality of data. If you're having to enter all that immunization data, the chances of making a mistake are inevitable, right? Like, it's going to happen. And with this PIER data, I think right now we have a high-quality, Ashley's work has done an amazing job with our data quality, but like I think this will even take us sort of next level. And there's a million things, like I said, that we can show you in here. We just want to give you an idea of why we're doing it. I think as these conversions go on, they can be a little challenging, but there is a kind of a promised land on the other side of this, of really being able to speed up our work.
Yeah, no, I think, just like Dwayne said, just the ability to work with the different departments, across the district and users, it's really just helped us dig into processes. Maybe in IT, we didn't necessarily know all the pieces and parts too. But then we take our expertise with systems and data, and then the expertise of the business process owner, and really make an awesome, you know, end product, which to me is really rewarding and I hope it serves our district, our students, and our parents really well. So it's been a lot of work, but really great work that I'm proud of.
I, do you guys have any questions, board members?
I just have one statement.
Okay.
As we're going through the process, one of the area, actually, first of all, let me say, praise Jesus, we're getting rid of Skyward.
Well, now, as Skyward's students, don't start any bad rumors about Skyward business, like, so like.
But transcripts, as we move forward, one of the biggest issues we had when I first came over to the board was Skyward to be able to trans, was able to produce transcripts and the information that parents wanted on the transcript to get to the colleges, like ranking and clubs and awards, that kind of stuff.
Sure.
I just make sure for the parents that we make sure that this transcript part.
I'm gonna tell you flat out, like, that is probably the biggest risk of any of these projects, and it's one of the things that we've been watching nearly day one. We've now gotten enough like course history, enough of the courses in, to where we'll start validating. We will be validating from here all the way to July, not necessarily because we have to, it's just because I believe in checking, and double-checking, and triple-checking, and quadruple-checking, because the GPA is kind of like the student information system's money to some extent. It's the thing we.
These kids.
I'm sorry.
And that, and that's what's, particularly as you're changing over and our kids are gonna be graduating and going to colleges, I'd be on, on that one, because if not, our phones will blow up. I'm just telling you guys.
It is, what are probably the utmost thing that we're scared about.
And we plan to do the semester GPA check and, you know, compare what we're seeing in Skyward to what we're seeing in Focus at the semester in January.
Yeah, I tell Ashley all the time, she has the chance to blow up GPA and the funding for the district.
Great.
So no pressure, right?
I feel great about it.
Because the state reporting piece is another process that we'll be running parallel with, along with the transcripts, to make sure that it's, that we have a high degree of quality and confidence.
And as always, I just wish you were more motivated, that's all.
So I think my, my perception of this is the words that you used in your presentation. I don't feel like our reaction to your bombs that you're dropping is appropriate. So we are equally as excited as you. I just don't think we had the opportunity to express it.
Inside the board, I didn't understand anything you were saying, we're really excited.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Other board members, do you have questions, Mr. Bradyberg?
So I'm gonna, like you guys, I love this stuff. Big data excites me for some very weird reason, but the power in this seems extremely powerful, for lack of a better word. Removing redundancies, just creating more efficiencies, seems like a game changer so that we can actually use all this data we're collecting to better help our students learn in a more real-time situation. So I think this is incredible. My biggest piece, and I think I'm getting ahead of it, and I think we'll talk about this more later, is the training piece with our teachers and staff and the overlap with Skyward for however long that's gonna be. And as things happen, as we roll this out, the one-on-one support for teachers and staff members is they have an issue to solve that quickly, to see the process on that. And again, that might be a later step, but.
It's definitely the, it's the, so a lot keeps us up at night and the training. I will tell you this, we think we have a good product, but the truth of the matter is, if you have bad training, no one will like it.
Correct.
And you can have a bad product and good training, and people will like it. It's the weird inversion on these things. And so like, I think you will see very extensive training. I will say this, is that the thing I'm thrilled with Ashley's work on is because she's already got those relationships with the business process owners. I think in the, in conversions I've seen, it can feel like the conversion is being done to you.
This conversion feels like it's being done with them, and that's a key difference to some extent. Because when it comes time for the training, we expect to have this business process there, not just because we need extra hands, but because they are really the experts in their slice of the system. So yeah, that will be very important.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
No, other than Ashley, you don't have to try me.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll definitely give you guys a training. We're happy, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so one is, is the, the state reporting and the rollover that we've, we've experienced with Skyward, right? Because I, I think that I just, for some reason, have seen a number of calls this year that I'd never received before, and I think it would have to do with the timing of when the state, or when we, when the state was releasing test scores to us, when we were inputting those into Skyward. And then that weekend, now we're going into maintenance, and so like, all these parents are like, wait a second here, you got your score? Oh, now I got to wait.
Yeah.
You know, and, and so does Focus resolve any of that conflict of timeline?
Yeah, I think the maintenance periods in Skyward are fairly, like, and I'm going to be careful here, because like, I think Skyward is a good product. I can understand why people buy, bought it when they did. I think the trick, the trick for us is, we need a product that underneath has progressed to a point where we, A, like, we need, to be able to get some of these good features out, we need a better database underneath, or a different database. I think more importantly, on maintenance, a different database or a newer database gets you to where you don't have these long shutdown periods. It's a little bit of an artifact of a database that's older. And so I think, in this particular case, like, I've never had something where I've seen this system or other modern systems go down for that long.
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying? Like, they update in it, we could click the button on the front end, and like, right now, we have a guy that does it, and it's a couple hour process. Or we could click the button, and it would do it in like, three minutes, and we would never see it go down. So like, I, I've never seen that kind of period. I think you will see that.
Well, that's, that's wonderful, and I, I will, I guess, remind you all of my thanks on how you were able to reduce that time, because, because I think that you put some practices in, you know, some kind of pivoted and, and tried to, tried to minimize that, the angst from, from the parent's side. So I'm thankful for that. I know you all did some work on that. Going back to the piece on, on the parents receiving feedback or rubrics and things of the sort, I think that's a great component. I think one of my concerns as a parent has been, now my kid, let's say, leaves elementary school where there's a lot of still papers coming home, goes to middle school, I never see my kids work anymore, you know, so I have no idea, you know, when I, when I see the grade and the grade book, what that means, because so much is done in Google Classroom. And so I, I don't know if this is part of a larger conversation of how do I get access to that, aside from calling him over and saying, okay, let's sit here, go ahead, log into your class link, and, and we just sit there together, and like, that becomes burdensome for me to poke around and, and see where, you know, what assignments have you done?
For sure. Yeah, it's, that's, that's a little bit more on the Google Classroom side, and there are some limitations there to some extent, but I think there are some things, some ways that we can bring some of that data over. We'll take a look at it and see what's possible.
Okay. Yeah, and, and speaking into the zeros piece, I'm interested to see if this does change any practices from teachers, because it seems like, and I don't know if you're experiencing this too with your kids, when I have a kid who's absent, a zero automatically goes in the grade book for whatever assignment they're missing, skews their average, or when the teacher creates the assignment, they just go ahead and plug in zeros for everybody, and then we'll go ahead and update that. And, you know, so I've got some kids who are just, you know, always looking at their, their grades and want to know where they stand. This doesn't give them a real picture. Or I've got another kid playing sports, coach pulls the reports and be like, oh, man, what's going on? You know, so, my teachers hadn't put in grades yet, well, why are they putting in zeros? I don't know, but.
Yeah, I think some of these conversations will go alongside as we get the grade book out, like, because that's a business process that, like, owner, that, like, we need to kind of sort of work on. That's one of the groups that's out there, and so I think those conversations. The system is pretty flexible. It will do what y'all want it to, for the most part. The question is, what do y'all, you know, what do y'all want it to? And I think that's always been a little bit of the challenges. Yeah. It definitely gives more information. Like I said, as a teacher, I would have really liked to know that that kid was out that day in the grade book, or entering the grade. It just, it does give me some more information to make a better decision, right?
Yeah. I only have two things for you. The first, and this just was spun off of what Mr. Dodd said, I know in the new mathematics textbook we adopted for elementary, that the testing components are online. And so like, I know the parents can't see what the questions are, they just get a grade, and then that, if there's an area that the teacher needs to correct on the test, they have to like, go in and manually change it. So for instance, and this, like, why are we talking about this with Focus? But I'm just wondering that the integration ability, or will they just take it from that system and put it into that system?
Yeah, I think one of the things that I am happy about this is that the, the, the most straightforward is basically the hook it has in the Google Classroom. So that's kind of like the A-plus level, like, integration. But one thing this has that is really good is, is that I think in that application, if I'd seen it correctly, I can run a spreadsheet out with the kid's grade and his name, and there's the ability to import.
Okay.
So it may be a couple of extra steps, as far as like, a couple clicks, but that beats like, entering 23 grades. I'm going to be honest with you. So like, there is that chance to be able to import assignment grades from other systems.
And that's interesting, as we continue down the path of virtual Google Classroom, like, what are the integration availabilities? And it sounds like this is much more advanced than that.
Hopefully, I will say this, is that it is being used right now in 45 of the 67 districts.
Yeah, I saw that.
And so realistically, like, I think we're in good company. I've put pressure on them to kind of, you know, if Florida's adopted this textbook, let's see what we can do.
Right. And the last thing I want to say is, I don't, I think this might be the first meeting we have been in ever, where I heard we're going to take something off somebody's plate. And so I applaud your recognition of that and how that affects the work environment, and I appreciate it. I know we're looking forward to it, so. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Board members, are you good, or do you need five minutes, or should we just keep going? Anybody?
Good.
Okay. All right, so that next, we have our update on accreditation process with Dr. Dejaray. Thank you.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
Superintendent Quinney, when she gets back.
She'll be right back.
Well, the last time we did an accreditation, many of you were with us, and it was in 2017. And at that time, we were a pilot, and we had the exciting opportunity to test drive the Advanced Ed at that time's processes. Well, now, we're trying out new standards and processes again. Yes.
It's called education.
It is. Okay, great. So it is. So we have a brand new accreditation process and a new company. Cognia merged in with Advanced Ed, and I think is taking over the world, but they have now become a corporation of five big, big agencies. So Cognia is our new accreditation agency, and they are, there is no site visit this time around. It is all remote through a lot of work on our end that we submit and then have evaluated. So all the documentation is due February 1st of 2023. They will assign a rating based on our quality of submitted documentation, and we have brand new standards again, and we have a heavy emphasis on data, processes, and descriptive writing summaries. So our protocols for being a system is we will conduct an exec, or we will produce an executive summary, standard self-assessment, stakeholder feedback analysis, learning environment observation analysis. We will offer assurances on 24 areas, an evidence portfolio, and then dissect all of the surveys that we conduct in the spring every year.
Are these surveys that already exist, or these are additional?
Yes. The, the wonderful news is we use Cognia's surveys.
Okay.
And so outside of one year where we did not do the surveys during COVID, we have the historical data. We do do our leadership and teacher-staff survey internally, so we'll validate that and make sure that we do an analysis of that. So the major steps in accreditation are required evidences, data collection, analysis summaries, and there are three. The executive summary I mentioned earlier, standards, rating, and narratives, reflection narrative, and then the assurances. So one of the things that they emphasize is we have to understand our purpose when we do our analysis. We have to identify, evaluate all data, and clean our data sources. We analyze and synthesize our information. We interpret our findings. We prioritize our findings. And then we develop a theory of action, which produces all of the narratives that we will submit that will get rated. So some of our required evidences are things that we do normally, that are part of our daily journey through education. We have our professional learning plan scheduled, a financial audit report, descriptions of our major initiatives and how we implement them. We analyze our learner performance, all of our achievement data, graduation attendance, disciplinary data. We analyze our stakeholder feedback. We improve, we look at our improvement goals, which is our strategic plan. We look at our curriculum, plan, map, scope, and sequence, our policies that govern our institution, documented organizational practices and procedures. And then there's a few more additional for the systems, which we have to provide, which are quality assurances, other types of evidences that might be unique to Lake County that they did not mention we can offer, program evaluation data, classroom observation data, and then any relevant improvement information that we have. This will all become part of our analysis section. So we have another phase, so we have like, phase one and then phase two, and that is the self-assessment flight phase. This is that executive summary, which is pretty much like a 2,000-word document about our institution and what we value most, that we want them to observe or, you know, rate. Our standard self-assessment, a reflection narrative, which is about 500 words long, which would be the last step that we'd use during this process. Our assurances, as I mentioned, are 24 assurances regarding ethics and regulatory standards, our student performance diagnostic, our stakeholder feedback diagnostic, and our evidence portfolio. So once we do that, a major part of our self-assessment is our standards and key characteristics reflection. So there's 30 new standards broken up into four categories. We have to collect and clean the data. So historically, we were able to provide documents that the teams would come in and evaluate. Now, we do that evaluation, we rate ourselves, and make sure that, you know, we have provided enough evidence for that rating, and then we submit those as part of an overall narrative for the entire district. And then when we get to the reflection narrative, that's the piece that we can offer areas of excellence, areas of improvement, and then areas proving challenging. And as mentioned, that's a 500-word narrative. So after we produce all of this amazing information out Lake County schools, we will schedule a leadership presentation with our evaluator. We have two, and that is scheduled for February 13th. They will have, we've viewed most of our documentation, if not all. And during that, that timeframe, it's an hour long, we will give a brief description of our community and demographics, our strategic priorities, key goals, identifiable data, and results. And then we will receive a 30-minute feedback session on their initial findings and any comments and observations they have. The final report will come out with an index score that some of you have seen, and then that should be provided no later than May. We're accredited through June of 2023. So we should have our brand new accreditation by May. I know that was pretty quick. Are there any questions about the new process?
No, that's great. But I'm just curious if the data's going to be available. When you're pulling data, are you going to be then pulling it from Skyward, or is this other system going to be up timely enough? Duane walked out, it's not really.
Oh, no, no, that, that's perfect. Actually, we have the departments working on every area right now, and they're looking for information that pertains most to their work. So when it comes to data, data sits within almost every department. So we have learner data, we have discipline data, demographic data, so we're pulling from many, many resources. But we're compartmentalizing the data so that when we go to put it in the correct category, we can analyze and synthesize that data. Yeah, so we've, we can use any resource. So one of the wonderful ones is Know Your Schools, which does some analysis, so that's the state reporting data. So we can use that, or we can use internal data.
Is that your plan of attack? You guys have the departments working on it, and then you guys are going to come together as cabinet?
Absolutely. Because it sits more in the reporting end, we don't have to do a site visit or any of those other things that were somewhat time-consuming. We actually can create the, the picture of Lake County schools that best represents who we are. And so every department is going through these phases, and they're working so hard to meet the, you know, timeframes, and we're working together collaboratively to knock out these narratives.
And the board doesn't have any requirements, I didn't see.
We have an, there's a section in the executive summary that we represented with questions about the board. So how often you were trained, historical information, policies. So there's, it's embedded in many areas, but the big chunk of it was in the executive summary. But there's a couple standards, key characteristic standards, that, that are about the board members.
Do you need us in attendance on February 13th?
No, ma'am, unless you'd like to be there.
Last go around, we got interviewed, and they launched four meetings, and so none of that exists anymore?
None of that exists anymore. So the big picture is, we're pretty much doing our analysis and then providing it to Cognia, who will then rate all the things that we've determined, and then provide a score on how well we did.
What's the cost?
$10,000.
Is that cheaper?
It's about the same. To host was very expensive and incredibly time-consuming. So I think we're going to come out pretty even on that.
Interesting, right? The whole process is interesting.
The whole process.
I feel like the COVID process, our pandemic, a lot of them had to go remote. I think that fed into the, the brand new kickoff.
Got it.
For this, and we're probably, for our evaluator, we're the first school that she is going to. We come first. I'm just, the thing that I'm really excited about is, they did say that we'll have a review in three years. They promised that last time, and we didn't have one midway. But they'll, it's every six years now, so maybe we'll get off the five-year nutrient cycle and go into have some, you know, precedence going forward.
Superintendent, did you have anything to add?
No, I, she talked about all the work, but honestly, Dr. Dejaray has spent probably, I don't know how many hours already on this, and so thank you. I know weekends and evenings that she has spent, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of data to collect and compile, and she started the drafts of the executive summary and all of those pieces together. It's, you remember from going through process last time, it's a great time of reflection, and really for me, just reflecting back on the past five years and all we've accomplished. And so I look forward to bringing you that final report, and then they'll give us our findings and something that we can, you know, workshop and go from. So it's, it's a lot of work, but thank you for your leadership on this. I know it's been a lot, and continues to be a lot.
We have the best employees in the world, and I'm just glad to be a part of Lake County schools and so proud to be a part of this county.
It makes me proud of you with the data perspective, and historically, I know that you've been, you've always been a master of data, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great afternoon.
You too. Our last item, which is 3.04, I think Kelly Randall is here, Executive Director of Facilities and Growth Planning.
I will try to be very quick. Obviously, no action today, but we just wanted to give you an opportunity to ask any questions, have any comments. If you remember, we approved the rezoning for the Aurelia Cole Academy back in 2020, and it felt like it would be years and years before we opened a new school, but that is coming sooner rather than later. We are on track to open Aurelia Cole in August, and one of the kind of lingering questions was the question of the eighth graders who are currently at Eastridge Middle School and Wendy Hill Middle School. And so at the time, trying to, we had so many different elements in that last rezoning that we tried not to confuse everybody too much, and said we would address this, this question as it got closer. So on the agenda, on the 14th, there is a recommendation for board action to approve grandfathering for certain classes of eighth graders who are at Eastridge. If you remember, there was a section that we allowed to remain at Eastridge Middle School. They're re-zoned to Aurelia Cole, but we allowed them to stay at Eastridge for those two-year period. And then their, the remainder of the Aurelia Cole Middle School students have been at Wendy Hill Middle School. And so we are recommending that those eighth graders be allowed to stay at Wendy Hill Middle School, and that transportation be provided just for that one year for '23, '24. So I'm really just here to ask you if there's any questions before you see that on your agenda on the 14th.
Board?
Yep.
None? Oh, thank you for the opportunity. That was the easiest item of the day, Kelly.
Excellent. That's always my goal. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mathias, we're on board member comments.
I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow's a big day. I would ask them to consider our renewing the referendum. .75 mil for safety, security, and mental health. I also want to wish you well, Tyler. You've been a quick study, and I've been amazed by your service so far. So I'm hoping that continues. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Mr. Brandyberg?
Get out and vote, and get out to Ren Fair. I was at Ren Fair this weekend. Ed Foundation staff is doing a great job, as always. Got one more weekend next, so get out there and see it. But get out and vote tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I've just got a couple of thank yous. The first being to my fellow board members. I'd like to thank you in my absence last week for accepting and putting forth my suggestion of a representative for our committee. She's very excited and ready to get to work, so I certainly do appreciate that. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Randall. For those of you who do not know, I am the school board's representative on the Lake County Planning and Zoning Committee. And it's been a very heated kind of process in the last couple of months. But I can tell you, because of Mrs. Randall and her department, there's another lady in your department. What's her name? Yes, she is wonderful. They have always kept me very prepared. And when the public, as they most often do, we have standing room only, when they come to talk about all these subdivisions and how that's going to affect our schools and the number and how we're building and paying for it and all of that, I always feel very confident and very, very much like I'm on top of it. So thank you very much. She's always available when I call. She drops things to help me, and she's helped me to manipulate that. And it's been a very steep learning curve, but I think we're finally there, so thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Tyler's sentiments about the Ren Fair. It's been an exciting weekend. I was out there at the, helping with the tomato hurling booth, and, right, that's a lot of fun. But I, I did have the chance to talk to a lot of people who had experienced Education Day there for the first time, and were like, I can't believe I've been missing out on all this, because it was, it was really amazing. So go out and visit. It's wonderful. and visit. It's wonderful.
All right. And vote. Thank you. We'll just add that. And I wanted to, I'm just, a thought, I saw on Facebook that the Taverrius Middle School cross-country team won like the national championship for cross-country middle schools, which I didn't even know was a competition that exists. And so it got me thinking about probably some of the other opportunities for our, our student athletes in middle school and, in high school. And I don't know if Mr. Hogan would be able to kind of keep us informed if there is any teams that are going state recognition or national recognition. I don't want to, I, I am keenly aware of what happens at Eustis, right? And Yum-Tilla Middle School, as I'm sure our other board members are, but we just missed some things and I would love the opportunity to recognize them, especially at the national, national level. That's incredible. So I wanted to give them a big shout out and I know there's some other sporting events that have happened. Eustis football team won districts the other night. Anyway, shout out to all of our student slots going on right now. And then the last thing I wanted to say was vote and please consider the referendum. It's really important for the work that we do for the students of Lake County. So Superintendent.
I stepped out quickly. Channel 13 showed up and said, hey, can we talk to you real quick about the referendum? So I, I figured y'all wouldn't mind if I stepped out for a few minutes. So appreciated them coming by and asking some questions about how important it is. And yes, I, I looked at Mr. Farnsworth in the back about your request and he's, he said, yes, he's on that.
Perfect.
He'll, we'll make sure that you get that information. And I, I actually have asked for the same. So I would like to make sure that we're all up to speed on what's happening with our student athletes. So thank you for that. Just a reminder that we are closed on Friday for Veterans Day and we have our first EOC call. I wouldn't think we were getting ready to do that again this afternoon. So I will keep you updated on where we are with that. We are now under a tropical storm watch and so there, we'll, I guess, get some more information this afternoon at 2:00. Just kind of see what the planning is and what the, what the storm, what they expect it to be doing. And knowing that the impacts will be on Thursday, so we won't, we won't have anything up until Thursday. And then we'll see what we need to do Thursday, if we need to adjust accordingly. And hopefully that will not be the case, but I'll keep you updated. Just a reminder that we have the Aviation Open House on Wednesday evening. So I mean, the, I, again, I don't think that the weather impacts will, would have us to change that event. It is at 6:00 and it is at the Curt Wright Center in Eustis. So I hope you'll come out. That's at a preview a couple of weeks ago. It's amazing and I'd love for you all to see that if you can. On Thursday, we did have the Aurelia Cole visit at 11:30 and Ms. Randall is asking if we can move that to the 17th, knowing that the weather will not permit us to have that on Thursday. So if you can check your calendars and let us know if you're available on the 13th, same time, same place on the 17th.
I'm out of sound, but, but I don't want you to hold it for me. So I.
I can do that.
I can do it.
Okay. All right. So she's got it. So we'll send you out any additional information on that and I'll keep you updated on what happens the rest of the week and.
Okay.
All right. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mathias?
All I have is when I saw tchotchkes on the table when I walked in, just a general reminder that if you think that a, a hand sanitizer or a pen or a Rubik's Cube is going to somehow influence your vote or your official action or judgment, leave it here. But if that's the case, we've got bigger problems anyway. So just.
May I, I'm so sorry to do that. We're, I know we're close. You guys are waiting for it. Mr. Mock's evaluation. We haven't, I don't, we haven't done that in a while. Can we look into that?
I will follow, yeah, I'll follow Steve on that.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right. Any others? Meeting adjourned.